All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this committee the whole meeting of the Arlington Heights Village Board to order on Monday, May 8, 2023, and ask you if you would at all please rise and join the Village Board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For purposes of roll call, let me just introduce the board members who are with us tonight. To your right are trustee Nicole Grassi, trustee Jim Tenalia, trustee Scott Shirley, trustee and president pro tem Robin Lebeds, trustee Jim Bertucci, trustee Wendy Donington, trustee Rich Baldino, and trustee Tom Schwingbeck. I am village president Tom Hayes. We have a number of items on the new business agenda tonight. The first is the election of a president pro tem, and we've, you'll be happy to know, Robin, that we've got TV coverage for your election this evening, and so they came out just for you.
I'm sure.
And so, so let me just remind everyone why we are doing this this evening. Village code does require the appointment of a president pro tem be made the second Monday in May following a municipal election. The code further requires that the village president send a memorandum advising the village board of his or her recommendation not later than the Friday before that meeting, and that was done. And my recommendation is that trustee Robin Lebeds continue as president pro tem for another two years, and I would ask for your concurrence with this recommendation. Robin is now one of our senior trustees, having served for 10 years on the village board. Unfortunately, I haven't given her too many opportunities to fill in, but hopefully that will change in the months and two years ahead. But she's done an outstanding job in the time that she has been able to fill in, and I have the utmost confidence that she would fulfill any and all obligations that are required as president pro tem, as she has done for the last two years.
Thank you.
So again, I would wholeheartedly recommend Robin for retention of this appointment and would ask for your concurrence. Trustee Schwingbeck.
Mayor Hayes, thank you. I would wholeheartedly agree. I think Robin's done a fantastic job over the last two years, and I would be happy to put a motion on the floor when we're ready.
Why don't you go ahead and do that, Tom?
I would move that the committee of the whole recommend to the board of trustees to concur in the mayor's recommendation that trustee Robin Lebeds continue as president pro tem for another two years. Second.
A motion by trustee Schwingbeck. I think trustee Baldino was first. Any questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed? Well, congratulations, Robin. I just hope you don't have to fill in tonight. You could tell I'm kind of losing my voice a little bit, and so hopefully I'll be able to get through this meeting without any problems. But I thank you for your dedicated service to the community for many more years than 10.
Yes.
But as an elected representative for 10 years, and I know you'll continue to do a great job as president pro tem, so thank you for your willingness to serve.
Well, thank you for your support in this, everybody. I really appreciate it, and I'm ready to jump in even tonight, if necessary, whenever you need me.
All right, thanks, Robin. All right, we move on then in the agenda to the department reports, and I would call on our village manager Randy Recklaus. Randy?
Thank you, Mayor. This is really always one of my favorite meetings or sets of meetings that we have in the year, and I think it really provides an opportunity for our department directors to talk about the things that they're seeing in their world and giving you all a more open-ended opportunity to talk about those items and learn about what's going on in the departments to set up what we have coming up in the summer with the strategic priorities process. So there's really three objectives: to hear about what's happening in each department, provide an opportunity for the board to ask questions and discuss the different topics of interest, and to help inform the board in preparation for your session this summer. One of the reasons why I think this is important is the board, as much as we try to communicate and as much as we try to provide a lot of information to you all, you really have kind of, it's the way we're set up, disproportionate interaction with the different departments. There are certain departments, like planning, that you see at virtually every meeting and hear from all the time, and there's others that you may hear about because they may have a high-profile project. But there's other departments that, under the normal course of business of your meetings, you really don't hear from that often, and it's not that they're not important, it's just that they don't come to board meetings a lot. And this process tries to break that down, and so we want to make sure that you're hearing from everyone in the organization, not just folks that are kind of more public, as you get into making decisions about what our priorities are going to be over the next couple of years. And this is our kind of cycle that we have. We're really on the kind of the bottom left over here right now, where we're in the assessment information gathering, and this meeting is really part of that, where we provide you with the information of things from our perspective. Part of what you pay the staff for is for us to use our professional perspective to help give you the information you need to make good decisions. Next, this summer, we'll be engaging in goal-setting, where we set priorities for the next two years. Staff then gets together and puts together the business plan, which is the goals and objectives and deadlines and mechanics of how we can achieve some of the strategic priorities. Then we get into, for each yearly cycle, what kind of resources can we bring to bear to do those things in a given year period? And then the budgeting process is the assignment of those resources, and then we go ahead and do the work. Obviously, there's a lot of pieces of information, not just these meetings that you all will be using as part of strategic priorities, obviously your interactions with the public, the written reports that you are going to be getting throughout this process. You've got the first two on Friday, the presentations themselves. We do periodic ad hoc surveys on various issues, and now, as you all know, we've begun doing a biannual survey, which is underway currently, and we'll have the results of that prior to your meeting this summer. And then you also are going to be getting, over the next couple of weeks, reports and letters from various boards and commissions on what they believe should be topics of interest for consideration by the board over the coming year. And then lastly, but not least, obviously, each of you brings your own values and perspectives as residents and as trustees, and those are the things that often end up being the deciding factors when we decide what direction we're going to be going over the next coming years. So tonight's meeting, you're going to be hearing what our departments are working on, what's been accomplished recently, what challenges do we see on the horizon, and what changes might we have to consider as we, in the near future, address those challenges. There is something that's different this year, and I suspect that's why our friends from the media are here. We do have a unique project, you guys have all heard of it, the Arlington Race Track Development. And what, as we went through this process, virtually every department is, has had to work with some aspect of this project as they go forward. And each written report that you get, the written reports are obviously more thorough than what you get presented to you in person, will highlight each department's contributions to the projects and perceived challenges. But we didn't want individual department presentations to get bogged down with discussions of the Bears project on everyone, because there is a lot of other things going on in the village, and we didn't want to have discussed that piecemeal. And so we decided that we would have a separate project presentation in one night, tonight, on the Bears project and have representatives of the key departments present, so we could talk that through all together in a cohesive way. And so that is a little bit different than what we've done in the past, but there is no written report on the project, because the written words are going to be in each of the individual departments, because we thought on the written word it was important to understand what each department was doing with the track, in context with other projects, because it is something that, you know, takes some time in many cases, and we wanted you all to see that. So tonight's lineup, we are, as we said, going to be giving a racetrack redevelopment update. We're going to be hearing from the Planning and Community Development Department and the Fire Department. So I'm going to transition here to the first presentation. Does anyone have any questions about the process before we go forward with the first presentation here?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So I'll jump right in. Obviously, a lot has happened related to this project, and we can't possibly cover every aspect of it in a few minutes here, but we can give the highlights. As noted, this project has and will touch virtually every village department, but it's important to note that we still do not know whether or not this project will occur. The village still has not formally reviewed or approved any plans, nor have we committed any village resources to support the project. Those discussions will come. So in terms of how this all broke down, just kind of quickly, for, you know, this meeting is being recorded for folks at home, and so we want to take the opportunity to kind of walk through the basic timeline. But back in November of 2020, the village was approached by Churchill Downs, indicating that they were exploring the sale of the racetrack property. In February of '21, they formally announced that the property was for sale. In June, the village, and we're going to be talking a little bit about this in a minute, we created a zoning overlay district to protect the village's interests. In the summer of 2021, we met with a number of interested parties. We weren't privy to all of those who bid on the project, but a number of them approached us and had questions for us as the village in terms of, you know, what the development process would entail and so forth. In August, we learned that the Bears were finalists for the project, and in September, the Bears and the village issued a joint announcement. In the fall of 2021 to summer 2022, we had a number of meetings with Bears representatives. Staff began doing a fair amount of research on what is entailed. If you were to be a host of an NFL stadium or a sports entertainment district, there was a lot of news and media attention, and there was a development of a tentative outline and timeline for the Bears for their purchasing decision. And there were a lot of meetings with stakeholders, a lot of meetings with, you know, business owners, the representatives of different taxing bodies, neighboring communities, and so forth. Fall of '22 was very busy. The Bears unveiled their concept. We had the discussion and approval of the pre-development agreement, a roadmap. The village hired its own consulting team, and then obviously, this winter, the Bears went ahead and purchased the property. So that's what happened timeline-wise. And at this point, what I want to highlight, and we're going to have other people speak here from staff, is, you know, the things that the village has done so far, is doing, and plans to do to protect the village's interests as this project is discussed. Regardless of whether the Bears move forward with this project or then build a stadium or if ultimately someone else develops the property with a completely different concept if the Bears decide not to go forward, it will be a significant change with a reasonable, a regional impact, given the size of this site and its prominence in our area. The village staff's job is to make sure that every step of the way, we are protecting our community's interests and that we're collecting and sharing as much information as possible with the village board so that the best decisions possible can be made. The village has a number of tools at our disposal to do that, most notably our zoning code. As I've said many times before, this or any other project cannot occur without the village board approving it. And we're aiming to use all of our legal, financial, and regulatory tools as artfully as possible to make sure that a good outcome for our residents is reached. One of the first steps that we took was the creation of the zoning overlay district, and Charles Perkins, our director of Planning and Community Development, is going to be talking about that. Charles?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. As many of you know, when Churchill Downs announced the property was for sale in February of 2021, we started looking at the site and what the zoning of the property was. Just to remind everybody, the zoning of the property is B3, which is a general service wholesale and motor vehicle district. It's really not a district that is appropriate for 326 acres and what we would like to see there. Even though the comprehensive plan calls for it to be mixed-use, the underlying zoning is the B3 district. So we started looking at that and presented a recommendation to the board in June of 2021. We knew this would be very big, we just didn't know how big it was going to be, but we wanted to set forth some controls. So an overlay zoning district is basically an overlay over the existing zoning, over the B3 zoning district, that has a different set of criteria that supplements and supersedes some of the underlying zoning. So we set forth that overlay district with the general goal to create a unique, one-of-a-kind redevelopment that would be special in the region and in the area. It encourages a mixed-use development, in a master plan and coordinated development. We did not want a piecemeal development approach. We also changed the subdivision code to prohibit piecemeal subdivisions. There is an exempt subdivision provision in the subdivision code that would have allowed multiple subdivisions of the property, and in June of 2021, we prohibited this property from taking advantage of that. We also prohibited about 23 uses that are currently allowed in the B3 zoning district. These range from car washes, gas stations, building material sales, motor vehicle repair, tool and die shop, warehouse, and wholesale districts. So those were some of the uses that we did not want to see on the property. We felt it had a higher and better use. The overlay district talks about a number of things, including preservation of natural site features, such as Salt Creek that runs through the property, connecting to existing pedestrian and bicycle facilities. It encourages the use of transit-oriented development within 1,300 feet of the metro station. So 1,300 feet is about a quarter of a mile. It's like walking from Sigewatt Street to our downtown station. It's a walkable distance that's typical with higher-density development that has a lower parking demand because of the ability to use transit. The overlay district also talks about exploring reuse and preservation of certain site elements, maybe a tip of the hat to the history of the property that has been a racetrack for almost 100 years. It also clarifies the need for impact fees, land dedication, extension of utilities, and other infrastructure to service the property, just in case there was a proposal that might have been exempt from some of those provisions. We wanted to make sure that was covered. And then lastly, it talked about including sustainable features within the master plan development. So that was kind of a table-setting exercise, just to kind of give the village more control. We know there's a long way to go that Randy and others will talk about in the next steps of moving forward with that, but that's just a high-level overview of the overlay zoning district to date. Thank you.
As I noted, you know, we're continuing to do our best to arm ourselves with information, and staff is trying to learn as much as possible about the reality of potentially hosting an NFL stadium and sports and entertainment district and its impacts. We still have a lot of research to do on this, but I do want to highlight some of the steps that we've taken to date. We have sought out some of the most well-known academics and practitioners in the industry, both on a formal and informal basis, to better understand community impacts and what methods are being used at other venues to manage those impacts. Our entire management team has undergone multiple days of training last summer on what is to be expected with the development of a stadium and/or district from an operational, financial, and process basis. You can see the picture there, it was one of the training sessions that we had with a professor that we had out, who is a nationally-known expert in this field. We've reviewed a number of case studies to see the impacts of some of the success stories in the business, as well as some of the projects that are now viewed as less than a success for host cities, and understand why both of, either of those scenarios played out. We're also calling our peers in other communities who already host stadiums to learn, again, what they felt went well and what didn't, and they've been quite candid with us as well. And this work continues in all of our departments, and tonight you're going to be hearing from police and fire, as they have engaged in some of the most robust research so far, but I can tell you that myself, representatives of Planning, Community Development, and Building and Life Safety have all spoken to peers in other communities about impacts and process implications on a regular basis to try to understand what may be lying ahead of us and what we can learn from some of these other processes. Learning about the operational impacts of having a venue like this potentially is not only important from an operational standpoint, but also from a design standpoint. We need to really understand how village services would need to work before we can design an environment where they can do their best work for a project of this magnitude. But with that, I'm going to turn things over to Chief Bakora, who's going to talk about some of the work that the Police Department has done thus far.
Thank you, Mr. Recklaus. Good evening.
Chief.
Apologize in advance for the nasally voice. My allergies are getting the best of me today. The Police Department's done a lot. The proposed redevelopment of Arlington Park into a modern sporting venue and entertainment district drew our attention immediately. The Police Department had a longstanding history of successfully managing public safety and traffic at the racetrack. Redevelopment of the site into a state-of-the-art NFL stadium required the Police Department to start taking a fresh look at a sport venue public safety experience. The decision to start looking at the project was not merely to get ahead of the proverbial what may occur, but more importantly, to not fall behind when and if aspects of the project start taking shape. I believe proper preparedness and due diligence is paramount for future success. Should this project come to fruition, the Police Department's primary goal is to deliver the same high-quality services and maintain the same expectation to the entire community. Next slide, please. Project management needs a roadmap. The Police Department developed a strategic approach to maintain focus. The approach consists of four key areas. The first is law enforcement training. While the Police Department already prioritizes training related to threat assessment, security, and critical incident response, we looked at on-topic training related to large-scale, modern sporting venues. The second is research. The Planning and Research function of the Police Department continually evaluates new and emerging trends in law enforcement. Examining available research not only provides information as to what could be expected or applied in real-life scenarios, but also stimulates the critical "what-if" thought process and develops the future areas that we may need to take a deeper analysis. Third is networking. Simply put, we sought to develop collaborative relationships with law enforcement and private-sector security professionals who have been in a similar situation. And last was onsite visits. Learning from a textbook, a classroom environment, or discussions with others can only go so far. Learning firsthand observations, experiencing the practical applications, was the way to go. Next slide, please. With these areas of focus, we sought to develop information as it related to general stadium safety and security, traffic management and the impact on our local community, the role of law enforcement for event operations and crowd management, visitor ingress, egress, and screening, staffing levels for both sworn law enforcement and private security necessary for safe management of events, and estimating corresponding costs, infrastructure improvements to support public safety operations, and last, event-related incidents and impact on local crime. Next slide, please. The Police Department partnered with Texas A&amp;M Engineering Extension Service, commonly referred to as TEACs, to bring a series of sport-venue-centric training to Arlington Heights. The training is supported by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, under the Department of Homeland Security. Seven different classes were presented onsite in Arlington Heights at no cost to the village over the last year. Classes varied in length from two to three days. We had 23 to 25 members of the Police Department, the Fire Department joined us as well. We may have had a security professional or two join us in the classes. Classroom instruction and practical exercises in topics such as risk assessment, event management, critical incident management, crowd management, public information, emergency notification, and the incident, I'm sorry, the incident command system. The training was provided by knowledgeable instructors with experience in managing large sporting venues. The instructors possessed a wealth of practical experience using best practices. This training is one of the only federally funded and federally approved curriculums regarding sport venue training. Instructors praised the Police Department's proactive approach and commended the timing and said it was appropriate in developing a successful strategy. Next slide, please. Undertaking this early training and research, we confirmed our initial thoughts regarding the importance of a coordinated and pre-planned response when managing multiple large-scale events that could potentially be held at a new stadium. While Arlington Heights has always subscribed to the incident command system structure, we felt this was a perfect opportunity to develop our knowledge and skills in this area. Our training was twofold: to train newly-promoted personnel in advanced ICS procedures, and two, to look at ICS command and control through the lens of what may be coming in the future. Essentially, practice makes perfect. Next slide, please. The Police Department further expanded our training mission by reaching out to our federal partners. As large venues have increased inherent risk as it relates to homeland security and safety, the Federal Bureau of Investigation and Department of Homeland Security were true, two immediate resources we sought to include in our processes. Having already established a strong working relationship with these partners, they understood the importance of our mission early in the project. The Police Department attended the Chicago Sports Special Events Summit this spring, as well as other seminars and training provided by our federal partners. Next slide. Our focus on training related to sport venue safety and security during this time provided valuable information that will benefit the Police Department staff regardless if the project moves forward. There was an immediate benefit to operational preparedness. Should this project move forward, training will be critical, be a critical component to provide our officers with the knowledge, skills, and abilities unique to police operations in this area. Whether pre-planned events, intelligent gathering, risk assessment, communications, or crowd management, an increased workload on the Police Department should be anticipated. Next slide, please. The Police Department staff reviewed published scholarly articles and studies as they relate to sports stadiums and entertainment districts. As with any study or analysis, the impact of the unique variables can dramatically differ based on interpretation, and some examples include: is a stadium in an urban area, a large city, a suburban area, or a rural area? Does it abut a residential or commercial property? What amenities accompany this stadium? Are there entertainment districts, adjacent sporting venues, arenas, shops, or malls? What's the principal use of the stadium and frequent use, frequency of the use? What's the baseline of crime in the area before correlating that to the impact of a crime after the stadium? Information gleaned from such publications has a tremendous value in assessing the issues law enforcement may face. Next slide, please. The Police Department found conflicting results on whether a large professional stadium increases overall crime rates. Anecdotally, it can be generally assumed that on game day, the increased visiting population has a potential to increase the need for police services. Some studies found a 2.6 increase in total crime rate during home games for a host NFL city, but ironically, saw more than a substantial decrease in crime during home playoff games. Some studies found theft as the primary contributor for any reported increase in crime. Other studies have found very little evidence that spectator sporting event correlates with citywide criminal behavior, showing that the presence of a major professional sports franchise had no influence on increase or decrease in citywide crime. Other studies examined whether there was a relationship between hosting a professional sports team and public safety staff. One study concluded the professional sports team increased police employment by 6.2%. Next slide, please. The Police Department also examined several other areas. One is grant funding. As with many other Police Department endeavors, grant funding remains a priority. With the increased homeland security risk associated with large events, federal grant funding will be explored. State and federal resources. For large, special, and sporting events, certain state and federal resources may be necessary to support successful law enforcement operations. Technology. A great deal of technology exists that is meant to support the safety and security of large sport venues. This ranges anywhere from software applications to managing personnel assignments, to real-time intelligence gathering solutions, or event automated traffic management. The Police Department continues to explore such technologies as it continues to evolve. Local ordinances. In many municipalities, ordinances exist to support law enforcement operations. We examined several different ordinances that addressed parking restrictions, emergency towing operations, tailgating, ride-sharing, and property rentals. In particular, is the cost of public safety services. Police, fire, EMS, and dispatch needs for game day are passed along to the venue operator as a cost of doing business. Traffic management. Understandably, the significant concern voiced by community members is the impact of additional traffic. The Police Department has seen various models of traffic management around stadiums and technology resources used to provide a more efficient and effective ingress and egress of vehicles. The most robust models leverage personnel, technology, and well-designed traffic plans to limit the impact of thousands- to limit the impact of thousands of vehicles leaving the area at the same time. Next slide, please. Networking. Police sought to develop a professional contact with our law enforcement partners and private organizations in the field of sporting venue safety and security. We've been extremely fortunate in this area, as each agency we have reached out to has been very supportive and willing to share their experience and knowledge. Each shared experience on what worked, what can be improved upon, and how their neighboring jurisdictions have supported operations. The police department also sought membership with the National Center for Sports Safety and Security, the nation's only academic center devoted to the study and practice of sports spectator safety and security. This organization provides valuable information regarding research and technology in the continually evolving world of sports venue security. Each of these site visits produced valuable real-world information and experience. We were able to experience law enforcement operations at an NFL game, a concert, and within an entertainment district. One thing that stood out in each of these locations is that no police department did it on their own. The host city managed operations with the assistance of local, county, and state agencies working cohesively together. This multi-agency approach helped alleviate the burden on any one agency. It required between 160 and 230 law enforcement officers to successfully manage an event. We were also surprised, maybe we brought the Arlington Heights bubble with us, that there was very limited law enforcement action at the three sites that we visited. There was only one arrest in Texas. Our hosts were very quick to point out that you have good days and you have bad days. The one arrest that we saw was in Arlington, Texas. Somebody was selling counterfeit tea merchandise on the corner, and they got arrested. The days were long. A typical NFL game operation lasted nearly 12 hours. From the arrival of the first tailgaters to the last fan leaving the stadium grounds, law enforcement had everything covered from multiple angles. We also had the opportunity to experience traffic management in both ingress and egress. As can be expected, egress was far more labor-intensive than most fans leaving at the same time. In efficient operations, the vast majority of lots were cleared in 60 minutes. That's an NFL best standard for fan experience. Essential in leaving these operations were the civilian personnel from traffic management agencies monitoring traffic plans via cameras and adjusting signals remotely accordingly. Personnel resources were deployed and redeployed through the intersections to make sure the fan experience was achieved. Next slide, please. So here's our site visits. October, November last year, we visited three NFL stadiums. The first was in early October, and we went to Arlington, Texas, the home of the Dallas Cowboys. Located just outside Dallas, Texas, with a police force of roughly 700 officers and a population of roughly 400,000. The Arlington police had their game day operations down to an impressive science. Next was Allegiant Stadium in Las Vegas, home of the Las Vegas Raiders. With a larger metropolitan police force, the Las Vegas Police Department was extremely well-versed in providing public safety from both a large and small-scale event and a large range of special events. They had their game day down to a science as well. Equally important to that visit was the fact that Manica was the architect of record, and it's the same architects that have been retained for the Bears, so it was nice to see what that stadium might look like. The last stadium visited was SoFi in Inglewood, California. Inglewood had strong similarities to what we're experiencing. Their police department of 170, and they put on 230 people on a game day. They draw from the California Highway Patrol, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, and neighboring agencies to put their game cadre together. Inglewood's been doing it for a couple of years. They had the, I don't know if it's good fortune, but the luxury of doing a couple of years' dry run with COVID with no fans in the stadium. So they got their experience on the front end, and when we were there in October, they did an outstanding job. And the last site visit that we did, it was back here, and it was a larger team that went. We went to Lake County Traffic Management Center, and we watched how the traffic engineers in Lake County can manage remotely the traffic cameras through cameras and then through remote applications to change the lights green or red to increase the efficiency of traffic flow. Next slide, please. So our site visits included the aforementioned three NFL stadiums, and they all provided real-world information and experience. We were able to experience law enforcement operations at the three games, and I mentioned the concert. That was in Las Vegas. One thing that really stood out at each of these locations is no police department did it on their own. The host agency managed operations with the assistance of neighboring local jurisdictions, county, and state agencies all working together. We saw a very limited number of enforcement operations, as I mentioned. The game day operations were long. Covered that already. The agencies had numerous resources deployed and available during the events. Examples included officers that were on UTVs around the stadium and bicycles to move through traffic, and officers on foot, increased presence for the Canines. And there were other special units onsite, but in this public forum, I really can't go into law enforcement-sensitive applications. We also had the experience to watch traffic, and as I mentioned, it's a fine-tuned machine, and if you don't hit that fan experience, there's a good likelihood that people are either going to complain about the service, or they're not going to come back as repeat visitors. So it's essential that the ingress and egress is concluded to be a fan experience. So the police department continues to inquire, learn, and assess. On Friday, the team, Friday this week, the team will leave bright and early from Minneapolis. We were invited by the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office to work beside them as they manage a concert operation at US Bank Stadium. Four police department staff members will spend Friday afternoon attending an operational briefing, followed by the concert operations on Saturday. And bright and early Sunday morning, we are going to come home and not face the wrath of mom and help celebrate Mother's Day. With that, I will conclude my presentation and turn it over to the fire chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Just like the police department, we've attended all the trainings that they hosted, and we found those incredibly useful, and we thank them for inviting us and having us attend with them. The biggest challenge we're seeing as we are proactive here is we're seeing many different service models at every different stadium we pretty much talked to. We've been in contact with Lambeau Field. We've been in contact with SoFi. We've been in contact with AT&amp;T. Lots of phone conversations, lots of teams' meetings, getting a lot of information from them, and each one of their service models is different. What I mean by that, some have private EMS inside and the fire on the outside. Some have fire on the inside and fire on the outside from the local municipality. So when we were doing our research, there's still too many unknowns for us to really dive in and figure out what this impact is going to be on the fire department as well as the community. So we chose one site, and we chose SoFi. After many meetings with SoFi and discussing their service model, they finally said to us, why don't you come out and do a game day with us? So we flew out. We took four of our administrative personnel. We flew out on a Wednesday. We got there a little before lunch, and we spent the entire afternoon going over incident action plans from the Super Bowl, from an NFL game, from a monster truck series, to a WWE wrestling event. And they could tell us what the impact was going to be because they've done it so many times before it even happened. We spent four hours going over these incident action plans, and when we were all said and done, they gave them to us and said, we'll come and we'll help you. Their service module out there is really different. They have 3,500 firefighters in LA County Fire. They need between 32 and 40 people to run an NFL game day. So we looked at that, and we tried to figure out what service model would be best for us. We still don't have enough information on that. So we went to a Thursday night game. Like the chief said, the game day operations were about 12 hours long. We started at 10:00 a.m., and we shadowed different parts of the module that they had in place there, from when it started outside the stadium till it went inside the stadium. And they could tell us when the first call was going to come in, what the first call was going to be, and on down the line, because they had it down to such a science, they knew when the calls were going to happen and what they would be, and as we saw, it played out just like that. On an average game day, we learned that they have between eight and 10 transports to the hospital each day. So not a huge impact, but their model is, they have their fire department there, but they use a private contractor to do the ambulance transports. So they didn't have to have ambulances of their own there. They had their own medics, but then they had a private take them onto the hospital. So the biggest takeaway for us and the things that we have to learn is unlike law enforcement, the one thing that has really stuck out in our research is the service models for EMS and fire vary a lot from venue to venue. So thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Before we let the chiefs go, one point, just I wanted to stress is, in your research, did you want to talk about how game day costs for operations are covered? You want to jump in there, Nick? Just since it was your work.
Sure.
You know, one of the points we're talking about in terms of having between 160 and 240 officers on duty, how is that paid for?
When I was mentioning our research in the ordinances, I think I mentioned that there was an ordinance that we found in Texas that covers the cost of game day operation. So the 230 officers that are with the Arlington, Texas Police Department and the neighboring agencies that come in, as well as the dispatch staff that they hire extra and the fire department staff, it's all covered by the Dallas Cowboys as a cost of doing business. So the $100-plus thousand in overtime for that game day is transferred to the liability of the host agency, and it's not borne by the municipality.
That's what I was looking for. Okay. So despite our best efforts to educate ourselves in these types of projects, we recognize that we are going to also need some outside help to protect our interests as we review a project of this magnitude. And Charles is going to review the consultants that we've hired thus far and that we'll use to help navigate the process.
So June last year, we issued requests for proposals for financial, economic impacts, and market feasibility analysis, and also transportation, traffic, and parking. We thought we would be a little further along than we are today, so we were looking at engaging those consultants and getting them to be part of our team. So with respect to the financial, economic, market feasibility analysis, the scope of work is broken down into three or four steps. So step one, the consultant would evaluate the preliminary plans and financial economic analysis that will be provided to us at some point by the Chicago Bears. They will conduct a kind of high-level peer review of that economic impact analysis. They'll provide their findings and areas of concern, deficiencies, assets and benefits, and then they will provide a high level of opinion on the financial feasibility and economic benefit and impact on the village, and that'll all be in the step one of their assignment. Step two will be, they will do independent market research. We don't want to just rely on the information that's provided to us by the Bears team. We want to drill down and do independent research. So they will look at comparable stadiums and entertainment districts and looking at data from them. They will look at other mixed-use development profiles and compare it with what's being proposed. They will project annual operating projections and anticipated local government expenses, and look at any kind of deal structures, if there's any public-private partnership, and looking at those financing mechanisms. Thirdly, they will, most importantly, be reviewing the financial analysis to make sure that the project itself generates sufficient income to be a net positive benefit for the village. In other words, your revenue generated by the development exceeds the ongoing operation costs or any kind of assistance that the village would have to provide. And then there are other steps beyond what's shown here, as far as ongoing consulting, working with the village team as we meet with the Bears team and discuss this further. So in early September, the board did retain hundred strategic partners. They've done over 1,000 projects or studies in the past 25 years. Currently, they've been working on projects that have a value of $20 billion. And then the nine months prior to retaining them, they worked on projects in the MBA Milwaukee District and various NFL and NHL deals in Virginia and Arizona. So they're a very quality company. This is the specialty area for them, and this is basically what they do. They do sports and entertainment, financial market feasibility studies. At the same time, we issued a RFP to 21 traffic consultants that specialize in stadium and entertainment venues. The objective of that assignment was to also have a kind of step-by-step approach. The first step would be to do a peer review of the initial high-level traffic and parking studies that we anticipate will be submitted at some point by the team to provide their findings of that peer review, similar to the financial side of the equation, on areas of concern, any deficiencies, assets and benefits for the region. There could be transportation improvements that would enhance things for others beyond Arlington Heights and beyond this particular situation. They will provide a high level of opinion on the feasibility of accommodating projected traffic and also onsite improvements and offsite improvements that might be needed. And they would review projected demand of the use of multimodal transportation systems, so Metro and Pace, rideshare and shuttle buses, and bicycle, and walking, and all of those multimodal type of ways of getting to the site. And they would provide their initial opinions on the impact on the surrounding transportation network. The step two, they would perform independent traffic and parking research on comparable stadium and entertainment districts, gathering data. So we're not just taking the word of the Bears consultant, we're vetting that. They would be looking at other expected misuse profiles, looking at the types of uses that could go on the site and the traffic that could be generated. They'll also be validating the capacity and ratio assumptions of persons per vehicle for different uses, persons per vehicle on game day, and various rideshare modes. And then step three would be a long-term, ongoing consultancy with the village, looking at detailed traffic and parking studies for each phase. We envision this development will take many years, and there'll be multiple phases and multiple detailed studies submitted. And they will partner with the village in discussions with the Chicago Bears, with state and county and local agencies as well. And in September, the village retains Sam Schwartz and graph engineering. And Sam Schwartz is a 140-person team with eight offices around the country, one office in Chicago area. They've worked a relevant experience on MetLife Stadium, Wrigley Field, the Barclays Center, and they've also done peer review on the MetLife Stadium and also consulted on the New York Giants, New York Knicks, traffic and parking impacts. So those two consultants were retained in September. They're awaiting in the wings for when the Bears are ready to submit their detailed plans and studies and work with the village team. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are on that, and turn it back to Randy.
Sure. So I do want to talk about briefly, the only formal board action that has been taken to date, the approval of the pre-development agreement. This was passed back November. It's a non-binding roadmap of next steps and a statement of mutual cooperation. But there's something very important to note. Many people are very concerned, rightfully, that taxpayers will be asked to pay for the construction of an NFL stadium within the community. And we are also very concerned about the potential of this, and in our research, we found that the horror stories that were out there are situations where communities pay for or own a stadium and are left having to own it or maintain it when a team leaves. And that's something that gave us a lot of pause, and as we did our research, found was something that was kind of scary. The good news is, as stated in the pre-development agreement, the Chicago Bears do not intend to ask the village to pay for a stadium on the site. Let me say that again. The pre-development agreement states that any stadium facility built here will be privately funded. I think that's important to say. However, the pre-development agreement, the Bears indicate that they do intend to ask the village for assistance to the village for assistance to pay for some of the infrastructure costs on the site. And it's worth noting that a number of the other potential suitors for the purchase of the property also asked the village about sharing in some of the infrastructure costs prior to even purchasing the property. The village has not agreed to pay for any costs for the project at this time, but we will consider them in the same manner that we do for all of our projects. The village has helped pay for some of the infrastructure costs for other projects within the community in the past. Most notable example is downtown Arlington Heights. So under what circumstances would the village even consider something like this? Essentially is what's being requested is that, you know, number one, there's acknowledgement that there will be a lot of new revenue generated from this site. This is new revenue that we are not getting now, that we were not getting when the racetrack was in operation. There are a number of things that can be taxed that will generate revenue in excess of anything that's ever been generated on that site before. Essentially, what's being asked for consideration is that some of that new revenue would be used to pay for some of the infrastructure expenses on the site. We would only consider using project-generated revenues. Again, not revenues that are generated within the community today, not property tax revenues that people are paying on their homes or their businesses, but new revenue. We would only consider if we and our consulting team found that the project would not be viable unless a public-private partnership were occurring and if it's determined that the project will generate a net increase in revenues for the village and surrounding community above levels, above current levels, even after factoring in all those new costs. And again, the net fiscal benefit that Charles noted. So what else is in the PDA? The Bears have agreed to cover any extraordinary cost the village needs to incur to review the project, which is not uncommon for large development projects. The Bears acknowledge the need for stakeholder and public input beyond a normal project. They are agreeing to work out a community benefits agreement where certain non-economic benefits to the Arlington Heights community would be negotiated. So what is next in our process? There's a lot of coverage lately about the resolution of the property tax discussion with Cook County. So what is that about? The Bears are seeking a greater degree of property tax certainty before moving forward. When the racetrack was in operation, it was paying approximately $3 million a year in property taxes for the entire site. This was when the racetrack was in operation, racing horses, selling food and drinks and had thousands of visitors, et cetera. The Bears received a new assessment recently, which would have them pay about $16 million a year in property taxes while it was vacant and generating no income. So from $3 million to $16 million while there's no operations. Presumably, with an NFL stadium, they'd be paying much, much more than the $16 million under that new formula. They are working with the county and local school districts to resolve that issue, just like many other commercial property taxpayers do when they receive a high assessment. But I do think it's important to note that the NFL stadium with the highest property tax bill in the United States is paying about 8.8 million currently. And that's with a stadium that's in operation. And for local point of reference, Wrigley Field, which is privately owned, pays about $2.7 million in property taxes. And the United Center pays about $6 million. So the team is taking issue with this reassessment, given that they don't have a stadium or any revenue-producing business on the site at that time. You know, the village is not, is monitoring those discussions. We're not really party to them. It's really between the county and the school districts and the team. However, we have repeatedly encouraged the parties to continue to work together and reach a fair and equitable resolution along the way. Once that issue is resolved, we hope to begin work on the financial, economic and traffic impacts of the development. We're very sensitive to the concerns that residents have about traffic, the impact on our existing businesses and the impact on our residents. And all of that work remains ahead and we'll be working with the residents and all of our other stakeholders on those issues when the time comes. The truth is, we are just not at a point where we can say what exactly the impact on our residents will be. But much work will be done to quantify and analyze and discuss those impacts far before any decisions are made. And with that, I'll open things up to the board for questions about this topic before we move on to department reports.
Well, thanks, Randy, and all members of the team for this very comprehensive report on where we've been and where we're going. Again, a lot is still uncertain, but when we embarked on this process more than two years ago now, I think we all felt that it was going to be a real challenge and a very difficult road ahead. But I think the board, as they can see tonight and the public, has seen over the course of these two-plus years, how well-qualified our team of folks is to handle this very daunting challenge. And so I just wanted to thank and acknowledge all members of the team for getting us to this point in this very lengthy process. We've still got a long, long way to go, but as I've said many times, I have the utmost confidence in the members of our team to continue to handle this challenge in the months and years ahead. So again, just thank you on behalf of this board and all members of our community for stepping up to the plate and meeting this challenge in a very positive way and very educated and professional way. And so again, thanks to all members of the team. So questions from the board. Trustee Schreiber.
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, thanks very much. It was an extremely informative report. Chief Pacora, Chief Harris, thank you. Just one question and then I wanted to just make a comment. But during the site visits, when you guys had an opportunity to meet with police and fire in those other cities, was there anything that you learned where you said, wow, I didn't see that coming? That was something that even with the racetrack here and everything that you guys do on a daily basis, were there any surprises?
No, I just think the, following the incident command system where you pre-plan, you assess your risks and you deploy accordingly, I mean, that's what we do for Frontier Days. But an NFL stadium is Frontier Days at a larger scale. So it's proper planning and execution at a different level. So there was no gotcha moment or...
No surprises or anything. You know, I think, I think Trustee Schreiber, you know, there were, there were a number of like little things, you know, one of the things that I thought was interesting was that, you know, we learned about some stadium design concepts that, you know, from an operational standpoint, I think some of our public safety staff had said that, you know, or those facilities said, you know, if we designed this building again, we'd put the, you know, lockup next to this and not on the other side of this. And so I think that there's, that's what I was alluding to when I was saying that there's design impacts to having this operational knowledge because, you know, obviously we'll have a lot of say in the design of a facility. We want to make sure that it's going to be easy to operate for folks, but nothing dramatic.
Okay, thank you. The only comment, Randy, that I wanted to make, and I know we've talked about this before, but maybe you can just reiterate it again tonight. You talked on the pre-development agreement where you said that the Bears do intend to ask for some assistance with the infrastructure side. As we've talked before, so do a lot of people.
Correct.
And they ask on, on small projects, some larger ones, and they're not always agreed to. So just because they're asking, maybe you can comment again, it doesn't mean...
No, it's routine and, you know, it's very common with, with business. Charles and I had a meeting with a property owner today that was looking for assistance. And, you know, we have a process to evaluate whether or not, you know, we believe it's in the best interest to provide assistance. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. And, you know, we would apply those same standards and, you know, when we have, I think the results have been positive and we've been very judicious about that. And we would use those same values looking at this project as we do any other.
Thank you. Yeah, and I look forward to having further discussions going forward. So thank you.
Trustee Baldino.
Thank you, Mayor. And I too want to express my thanks and appreciation to our village team for all the work and legwork that has been done up to this point. It has been very much appreciated because I feel more prepared as a board member because of the work that you all have been doing. So thank you for that. I have one, one question, and I don't know if Charles or Randy wants to answer this, but in the very beginning, when we were talking about the zoning overlay district, Charles mentioned that there are some uses that the village board said are prohibited. And when I reviewed the concept, I'm not going to call it a plan, but when I reviewed the concept that the Chicago Bears Football Club made public, it seemed to me that there was at least one use in their multi-use concept that would fall under the definition of prohibited use. And I don't want to get into specifics. I don't want to get it, get down in the weeds. My question is, have the Bears, the Chicago Bears been made aware of the zoning overlay and what those prohibited uses are?
Yes, they've been made aware, you know, we, as we've said repeatedly, the plan that's been proposed has not been formally reviewed by us. We don't have enough information to review it and we're not at that phase in the project yet, but certainly there will be comments like any, you know, they will, there will be some discussions of that, but they know what our expectations are based on the overlay district and that'll be part of the discussion.
All right, very good. Thank you, Randy.
Trustee Dantin.
Thanks so much. Thank you so much for the plan. It was really well done and great to hear the update. I was wondering, when we do receive a plan and we start to work with Hunden Strategic Partners, when, what is the timeline of that? Like, how long would we expect to receive information back from them? Like their step one, the peer review, and what is the process of each step and the timing of it?
I'm going to give you the worst answer I could possibly give you. It depends. You know, I think, you know, when we, when we've looked at how other communities have done this, there's a lot of back and forth. And, you know, I think that they will, they will essentially, the Bears will provide some kind of study where showing what they think, you know, the economic impact will be and the revenue impact will be and so forth for their project. We will have Hunden review that. I don't think that review in and of itself will take that long, but there probably will be a fair amount of back and forth between Hunden and their consultants and then us and the Bears. And there may be, you know, if we don't like what some of the results are, it may fundamentally change the plan. So then you go back and forth to the drawing board again. And so that's what depends. But I think in terms of a turnaround, I don't know if we have that in the, in the agreement in terms of how quickly they have to be able to review it.
Well, we did, but that was last year. So it does depend on what Randy just said and also Hunden's workload. So if, when we get the materials now, which is six or seven months later and they're in the midst of finishing up another big project, it may take a little bit longer. If they've just finished up that big project, then it may be quicker. But, you know, typically that first peer review, I think, would be in a four to six-week range.
Okay.
But then, as Randy said, there would be back and forth. So it may not be in its final form, you know, for a while after that.
Okay. So the, with Sam Schwartz, that's an ongoing consultation. Would the Hunden also be an ongoing relationship?
Yes, both of them. You know, because I think there will be, as the plan evolves, there's going to be changes that impact the bottom line, just like there'll be planned, changes that impact traffic management. And so, you know, we will be working with them as long as we need them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Trustee Bertucci.
Thank you, Mayor. And Randy, thank you for your report. And staff also found it very informative. I think at this point, what I just wanted to get across was, you know, just two things and highlight what I'm hearing and what we all know, once again, just to kind of continue to push it out there. One is that, again, there will be no village funds for the stadium. And secondly, if there is any tax incentives or something to the effect of infrastructure, that that is common, very, I would almost say very common, whether it's for a development or some other change within a property or a development. The other thing that I wanted to just move, you know, get out there also was, in my talking to and relationship with everybody on this board and staff, I find everybody has the realization that, you know, this will go on for five, 10, and the property itself could not completely develop, maybe we'll have a stadium, but not completely develop for more than 10 years. And I find everybody willing to do what they can. I mean, certainly the board has elections every two years. Some of you gentlemen will not live or work forever. So we will have retirements, new elections. And I find everybody willing to just carry the board, the ball forward, so to speak, as far as they can until they need to hand it off, so to speak. I also find a, a sense of, we're going to do what we can, but we're going to leave it better than we found it, from, to each individual staff member, whether it's the fire chief, the police chief, Randy, yourself as village manager and all the department heads. And I think that's very important because the realization is that this is a very long-term project. And I am very impressed with not only our staff, but also everybody on this board who are realists and say, we're going to, I may not be still on this board when there's the first kickoff or when that's completely developed, but I will do the best I can and I will leave it better than I found it. So I just want to compliment everybody on this board and all of our staff.
Trustee Lebedz.
Thank you, Mayor Hayes. Thank you, Randy, and staff for your very informative project and all the research you've been doing up to this point, whether it's working, talking to consultants or academics or visiting a stadium or any of that. That is so important to lay down a foundation for what we may be going through because if we were to wait until a plan came before us, there'd be a lot of scrambling to see, to be able to analyze it appropriately and to make sure that it would be the best plan that could possibly, you know, be here. And I also want to thank Trustee Bertucci for his comments just now. And I think that, I agree that I think we all are in it to do the best we can while we're here, whether we're here on the board or whether it's staff. And I really appreciate that very much. I just have one question, sort of comment, and I'm going to go back to the zoning overlay district, since it's been almost two years since we approved that and really before we knew what might happen at that property. One of the things I wanted to point out was, it's not the first time we've done a zoning overlay district, correct? And I think downtown was one. And maybe Mr. Perkins, you could talk about that a little bit.
Downtown is not an overlay zoning district, but we do have other overlay zoning districts. Most recent one was at the Arlington Downs Development Site, which is immediately west. We have an overlay zoning district there. We also have an overlay zoning district on South Arlington Heights Road Corridor. Those are the two most recent ones.
Okay, thank you. And it's good to have these because it helps us control what we want in these locations.
Absolutely.
So, so thank you. That's all.
Trustee Tannalia.
Thanks, Mayor. So you guys did a great job just now. From everything that you presented, Randy, Chief Pacora, Chief Harris, Charles, this was a great educational meeting for all of us and everyone who's watching in the room here and at home. It's a great update and I just want to emphasize how much, how appreciative I am and I think all of us are too. This is a great update. And it highlights a number of important, critical factors that a lot of people ask about. You've heard a lot of the questions, so I'm not going to repeat those, but those are all big questions in a lot of people's minds. There was a slide, well, before I go into the details, I want to make another really quick comment. This is not a sprint race. We've said this before a dozen times. This is a marathon. And it could take five, seven, 10 years or more to get this done. And I think all of us in the community need to be aware of that and recognize that, hey, we're in this together, whether we're voting on something, working hard to get educated on something, as you guys all have done a great job so far, or reviewing something in the future. It's a marathon and it's going to take a long time to get it right. These are the steps you have to take. So I'm really appreciative of everything you've done so far. It's great to hear. So there was a slide that you put up, Charles, a village consulting team slide is what I wrote down. So there was a slide that you put up, Charles, a village consulting team slide is what I wrote down. Just to be clear for everyone again, how many of these items on here have been done so far, have been taken place, Randy?
None.
Zero. Nothing. None of this stuff has been done. How many months have this, have people been talking about this prop, this plan and this idea?
It was publicly presented in last September.
September, October, something back there. So what is that, seven months?
That sounds about right.
And, and there's been no real forward progress from the Chicago Bears Football Team on site design change? There's been no change since that first site plan that we saw with all the beautiful pictures and renderings. We haven't seen anything new since then, correct?
Correct.
The only thing that has changed that, that we've been aware of is that they've applied for a demolition permit.
They've applied for one, yes. That's under review.
And there's, there's, there's nothing new on the drawing boards other than that.
Correct.
And, and the demolition permit, as if, I think we can all guess, it's based on economics or taxes.
That's our understanding, but, you know, that, that's something that they would have to speak for themselves on.
Yeah. But I mean, it would make sense that that's probably what they're after there. I think the last question I had is, when you talk about infrastructure and costs, that any large developments, even some small ones, might ask for help or assistance and financially, can you give everyone here maybe a handful of ideas of what those infrastructure components might be? What's an example of what that might be?
You know, I think one of the things, there, there's a few things that make this site unique. This site does not have, versus a lot of sites that are similar in size, it does not have a, you know, public road network. It doesn't have very many utilities to speak of, things of that nature. And so there will be a lot of infrastructure that will need to be constructed to service this site, whether it's a NFL stadium or if it's anything. And so, you know, some of those types of costs, you know, might be the types of things that folks may ask for. Sometimes we will be asked by a developer to help, you know, bring sewer lines or water lines into an area or to, you know, do assistance with com ad if they need to, you know, move lines into the area, to extend a road network, things of that nature. Generally, you know, things that we're in the business of doing typically, extending some of those things that we, we do into a piece of private property or some of the things that we often are asked to do. And again, you know, we haven't agreed to anything and, and we, we haven't been formally asked anything yet. They've just indicated that they, they, you know, intend to ask at some point for help with some of those costs. And that certainly, we would not be able to, to pay for all of the infrastructure work that's going to need to be done to develop a site of this kind.
Right. So those are great examples of what, what we would see virtually any week for any project, whether it's a stoplight or an intersection or stormwater or something like that. These are things that have to happen on a project and something this big is just going to have a whole bunch of them, right? And so what you emphasized really clearly, and I just want to reiterate it again, is that it is our intention as a team here, everyone, that no money will be spent on this infrastructure component. Certainly not the stadium, we all understand that. But no money will be spent on this infrastructure program unless the end, I'll use a pun, the end zone of this provides for a larger tax benefit. And that's the money we would use. It's not like we're taxing people's real estate or, you know, sales tax or anything like that to cover some of those infrastructure components. It would be a net gain that is calculated in advance.
Correct.
Correct? So those are all great answers. Those are all great points. And I'm really thankful that you guys presented this today. I'm very excited and I hope this starts rolling well.
Trustee Grassi.
Thank you. Couple of comments. First, one concern I hear a lot from residents is about the traffic. And I, I heard you mention just this ongoing consultant would be about the traffic concerns if this project starts from the beginning and all the different phases of the project. Is that correct?
Correct.
Because the traffic can be affected and will be affected throughout all of the different phases. So I appreciated that. I wanted to just say that out loud again. I think what I really just want to comment on, you know, I agree with, with the comments made by, by my, my colleagues on the board. The myriad community impacts that this project has on all of the different parts of our, our village has been taken very seriously. And I really appreciate the work, the time, the effort, the energy that's being put into this because there is so much involved and I just really appreciate all you're doing. But what I have heard from every single department, and including the board too, is that really we do have the common, or two, or two common goals mentioned from every department and, and the board also, that really everything that is being done is to protect our village interests. And, and also to really make sure that there's a net positive benefit for our village. And I think that's not just financial, that's also quality of life. So I just really appreciate all the work and energy and effort and just how we are all coming together. And I truly appreciate just the professional staff we have with our village. This is wonderful. So thank you.
Okay. If nothing further from the board, before we move on to the other department reports, I do have one blue card from an individual in the audience who wishes to address the board on this agenda item. That's Donald Miersman. And Mr. Miersman, you're familiar with the process. We would just like to keep you to three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. A, a lot of the plans that were discussed here tonight are in their infancy. There is a plan that has already passed its infancy. It's 132 pages. It is Illinois Senate Bill 1350, the mega project bill. It now has six cosponsors from Carol Stream, West Dundee, Morris, Lamont, Lake Zurich, and of course, our own State Senator Anne Gillespie of Arlington Heights. This bill could impact our community for 40 years. Taxpayers in Arlington Heights know you and trust you. Taxpayers look to you for leadership. And I ask, if you have the time, if you have the opportunity, please consult with these state senators who represent districts far from Arlington Heights so they can appreciate our unique local situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miersman. I can assure you that we have and we will. Next is Brian, Brian Caston. And Mr. Caston, you're also familiar with the process, so three-minute time limit, please.
Thank you. So thank you for mentioning the demolition of the racetrack because that's a big development. And it represents an enormous risk for the taxpayers of Arlington Heights and surrounding areas. First of all, no one has seen the finances of the Chicago Bears. No one knows how much they are going to be asking for in total subsidies. But the demolition of the racetrack will increase potential costs for the taxpayers if the mega project's legislation is passed or TIF legislation is passed here on the local level. There were two other bidders for the racetrack who wanted to preserve the racetrack. And there was no known asks from those parties for taxpayer assistance. To summarize, the Bears have asked 18 different times for some form of taxpayer assistance, totaling potentially hundreds of millions or billions of dollars. Approving the racetrack demolition is an enormous risk to the taxpayers. But I wanted to say, here's the list of all the different taxpayer subsidies the Bears have asked for or have been presented in legislation that would benefit the Bears. Tax increment financing, special service areas, special assessments, the creation of a business district, the imposition of a business district tax, an imposition of a parking tax, other taxes generated by the project. For SB 1350, a use tax exemption for the construction of the property, an occupation tax exemption for the construction of the property, a service occupation, occupation tax exemption for the construction of the project, a retail's occupation tax exemption for the construction of the property. There's about a list of 40 different things that they want exemptions from paying taxes for the construction of the property, from things like electrical systems, equipment, climate control. There's a huge list in the legislation that should be considered. So they do want taxpayer subsidies for the construction of the stadium, unlike what they've been saying. HB 1440, a mega project sports and entertainment facility tax. Arlington Mega Project Infrastructure Fund, a sports wagering tax, hotel taxes, liquor taxes. But what perhaps is the most important is that they want a property tax swap. For every dollar in that legislation, which they would get a reduction in their property taxes, they want other taxpayers to pay dollar-for-dollar increase in their property taxes. I urge you to look at page 111 of the legislation, which talks about the fair cash value. Essentially, what it would mean is that the Bears would not have to pay their full taxes, but all of the overlapping taxing bodies in the areas would able to increase their, their assessments for the limitation on property taxes and the limitations on bond holdings as if they were paying their full property taxes. That would be a disaster for the taxpayers of Arlington Heights and surrounding communities. The Bears are asking us to pay their property taxes. Approving the-
And Mr. Caston, you've reached your three-minute time limit. Thank you.
Thank you.
And let me just say in response, I mean, whether what you say is true or not, I'm not sure. But what I can tell you for certain, that none of what you indicated on that list has been approved by this board or anyone else. And so, you know, they can ask for whatever they want, but it will be subject to discussion and public input and a vote by somebody. And none of that, that you've listed, has been approved by this board or anyone else that I'm aware of. So is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the board on this agenda item? Melissa?
Melissa Kears speaking. The racetrack property is in good shape. They're right next to 53 Northwest Highway, Euclid Avenue. They have a nice water feature on there and a nice pavilion for concerts and other things. They have bike paths also to several towns, downtown areas. May they have live chickens on that property for egg-laying purposes?
Melissa, why don't you just take whatever time you need and then-
Training asset forfeiture funds, where, is that what they use? The asset forfeiture funds for their training? And what are asset forfeiture funds? Won't the, that the new owners have their own security for that area? And what will the security be like when they are building the area? Normally, when a business, they'll start out small, they'll build a success, then they'll invest more capital and build it even bigger. So they don't need to go, you know, big all at once. And please put the website addresses on the property tax bill for the taxing bodies so when people see their property tax bill, they can go to the taxing body and look at the information. My 2021 bill billed me $18 per day, a little over $18 per day.
Melissa, if we could focus on the Bears' agenda item, so we've got other stuff on the agenda tonight.
And also, the project is glamorous, so I could see why the village staff would want, rather work on that than filling potholes. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the board on this agenda item? All right, seeing none, any further discussion from the board? Anything else from the staff?
Not this time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Recklaus and all of the presenters for a great job tonight. Thank you all. Let's move on. Randy, what's next?
Planning and Community Development.
Mr. Perkins.
Thank you. Randy said this was his favorite meeting with the board, and I would say every meeting with the board is my favorite meeting.
Are you, are you up for salary review or what?
I think I'm a bit late for that.
Okay.
So I'm happy to present the Planning, Community Development Department Annual Report, or Biannual Report as it is, just to quickly go over the functions of our department. We have five or six major function areas from planning and zoning to community redevelopment, economic development, housing and urban design. Some of our mission and department objectives are to provide professional courteous service to the board, to our citizens, to the business community, and to promote the highest quality development that the community deserves, balancing the needs of the residents and, and the rights of property owners as well. Our staffing and workload has been challenging over the last six months. As the board's aware, we've lost a couple of staff members. Our Assistant Director of 30 years retired. My Administrative Assistant of 20 years retired. I'm pleased to say that we've gone through the recruiting process and, and hired two new individuals, Michael Isakakis, who's with us tonight. Michael, he joined us a few months ago. And Kendra Meyer is the new Administrative Assistant, and they're getting their feet wet and, and going to be fantastic additions to the department. I also want to make sure I thank my department staff for all their effort over the past couple of years and in particular, the past few months when we've had short staff and the extra pieces that they've had to pick up and help out. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. The, in the report, you'll see there's a whole series of performance measures. I've just picked out a couple here. You know, talking about day-to-day things like potholes, we review 2,243 zoning permits last year, 296 signed permits. We managed 98, almost 100 Freedom of Information requests. There's a lot of data in the performance standards. So even though, yes, we, we had a focus on, on the big project, everybody's permit is very important, whether it's a fence permit or a shed permit or an addition or a new house. Those all need to be reviewed in a timely fashion, and that's a constant workflow. That's a constant demand on staff. We also provide liaison to six different boards and commissions and all the work that's involved in that. Earlier this year, we presented and distributed our 2022 Economic Development Report. It's about a 30-page report. This is just a very snapshot, a quick snapshot. There were 96 new businesses that opened in Arlington Heights last year, a little over 600 new jobs occupying just over 600,000 square feet of space. These are our business retention and business attraction efforts. It's probably undercounted. These are primarily efforts that Michael Murdis or myself make, and, and we don't really have a good system for other staff in the department to track what they're doing and their interaction with businesses on, on things that they deal with. Other accomplishments, post-COVID, we continue to deal with, you know, things that kind of derailed us in one way, but helped us in others, such as electronic distribution of plans and materials. Our new ERP system is taking a lot of time, but will actually be really beneficial in enhancing that even, even further. We had three different grant and loan programs for the business community. A typical standard zero-interest loan program up to $20,000. And then we had COVID relief programs and then forgivable loan programs. And then, of course, Arlington Alfresco, you know, reaching out, having, you know, meetings with Zoom with the business community, with the downtown residents, individual one-on-one meetings to resolve various issues. And Alfresco sales in the five months of 2022 were up almost 48% over pre-COVID in 2019. We provide background and reports on five different current strategic priorities that the board has in their strategic plan. Promoting, continuing to promote assistance to businesses. And we're looking at a diverse business spotlight, and we've developed a program working with the Arlington Economic Alliance on promoting diverse businesses of, of different backgrounds. And so hopefully, we'll be rolling that initiative out over the next year. On the development front, we saw additional development at Arlington Downs. Arlington Downs, too, the residential development, 263 units, started occupancy in October last year. And First Ascent opened in July last year, bringing a new, unique entertainment exercise venue. And they're bringing events from around the country, which is exciting to see. Four North Hickory in a TIF district, just by Mariano's. That project is under construction, just topping out, and that's going to be a shot in the arm for that development area. Crescent Place is a 40-unit affordable apartment development. Staff spent an northern amount of time dealing with the neighbors and the Plan Commission and the Village Board, doing additional research, answering questions to get that project to a point where it could be approved by the board, and that's currently under construction. Ridge Line up on Dundee Road, that's a 650,000-square-foot warehouse distribution facility. The village approved a Class 6 tax abatement for that development to get that project in town. Even with the tax abatement, that developer's estimating the project will generate 1.5 million in new property taxes. million in new property taxes over and above what was there previously. In the downtown area, we've talked a lot about Arlington 425. Couple of meetings ago, the board extended the timeline for that. That project has yet to start construction. Sigewatt 16 is completed and occupied on the south fringe of downtown. And then the 44 South Vale, former vacant AT&amp;T building, has been completely renovated, looks really nice. And the Exchange Co-Working has opened, and a couple of other businesses are opening in that building. So that's bringing a nice daytime business occupancy to the downtown to supplement the residential that we have. And then we're working on with the developer going through the process for 116, 120 Eastman for redevelopment of some vacant three-story office buildings on the north side of downtown. We have four tax increment financing districts. TIF 4 on the Gulf and Arlington Heights Road, we worked with Ryan Companies on a senior living facility for several years. They ultimately backed away from the deal. And for the last 10 months, we've been working with Urban Street that has International Plaza under contract. We negotiated three different redevelopment agreements at Town and Country and South Point to facilitate redevelopment and new outlets. When you have At Home, that's occupied a former vacant 100,000-square-foot tenant space. We've got Chipoli, Consumers Credit Union, Raising Cane, new buildings up in that corridor. And the South Arlington Heights Road, TIF district, I'll talk a little bit more about, we have a sewer capacity study underway to look at how we can address that infrastructure needs to facilitate new development in that area. And then other projects kind of run the gamut, everything from managing the senior center space utilization study to recreational cannabis zoning, the village logo and brand development, and then Art and Kensington mural. In the report, under anticipated challenges, we identified a few questions just to kind of think about as we move forward over the next year. Things like what funding can be available for, you know, permanent enhancements to downtown to build on the unique brand that we've created with Arlington Alfresco? What impact will the hybrid office market have on vacant office space? How will it impact design, occupancy, and parking? Or are some of those buildings that are currently vacant best being repurposed? Many retailers are closing their brick-and-mortar stores, so what segments and services will thrive, and how can the village best be positioned to take advantage of these? We attend several of the International Council Shopping Center conventions to keep on top of what retailers are looking at moving in the marketplace, and then quickly taking advantage of things like At Home when they're looking at the marketplace, trying to, you know, develop a redevelopment agreement or negotiate a redevelopment agreement to get that store in Arlington Heights versus going to surrounding community. How will the downtown Chicago office market impact commuters, public transportation, the changes in schedules and systems, and impact of our parking system? And then how will the economy and supply chain issues impact both public and private sector projects? We're already seeing increasing costs. We're seeing interest rates impacting private developer projects and how they can start their projects. Other things like the workload that mentioned and talked about. In the budget process last year, the village board did approve adding an additional position, an entry-level planner. So we've been going through that recruitment process for this year, and the new person will start at the end of this month. It is an entry-level position. She'll spend about 25% of her time on assisting Michael Murdis with economic business development. And then the remainder of the time with other senior-level planners on zoning reviews and research to kind of free their time up so we can tap their expertise on some of these larger projects that we've been trying to do. And then other things, you know, just new technology, the ERP system, you probably hear from other departments as well, but also drone deliveries, autonomous vehicles, all of those technologies, how are they going to impact, you know, Arlington Heights and various site planning issues? On the downtown, we spent 30 years developing downtown into kind of a unique, exciting, vibrant downtown brand. It's kind of an entertainment district. We know there are concerns from some of the businesses on the racetrack project. We've identified one of the goals as being the ability to enhance and connect new development to downtown and not to track from it. So specifically, the development should be complementary and synergistic to the downtown. And then how can we continue to grow downtown in kind of four major areas? Downtown development, enhancing amenities, permanent improvements to streetscape and other things, a unified marketing and destination plan, and then promoting utilization of our existing parking infrastructure on times that it's not being used, but we have a heavier demand in other areas. And then, of course, funding for all of those things. So breaking it down on the development front, here you'll see some images of Arlington 425, it's been approved, that's really in the hands of the developer. To move forward with that, we're working with the developer of the Eastman, proposed Eastman development. They're just finishing up a project in a town east of us, and they're proposing to redevelop the vacant office buildings on Eastman on the north edge of town. That's going to a public hearing at the end of the month. There are other sites that could have potential redevelopment that are identified in our downtown master plan. And also, the Arlington Heights Road corridor from Eastman down to Park has the opportunity for smaller, lower-scale development over time that could enhance the gateway and the entrance experience coming into downtown. How do we utilize the parking systems that we have during peak times on a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night when parking's available in the surface parking lots by the train, parking lot S, the north garage, the parking garage here? We've added new signage. We've added, to the tune of over $450,000, the parking guidance system that tells customers how many spaces are available on each level in the Vale Garage. But on the Sands of Summer events and Arlington Alfresco, peak evenings, your Vale Garage is surcharged and at capacity at times. So we've looked at, you know, encouraging through social media and marketing, people parking in those more, you know, remote areas, although they're only a couple of blocks away, they're not really that remote. But we've also started to explore, at what point does it make sense, or would people use some kind of EV shuttle? If we were to purchase eight- or 10-seater EVs, you can see a little route, you could do a route four times an hour on the south side of the tracks and on the north side of the tracks. It will cost some money. Would people use it? How could we make it fun? All of those things need to be continued to explored. Arlington Heights is kind of like the mall operator of downtown. We own the streets and the infrastructure and the businesses, and I like the mall tenants. So how can we improve, you know, the public realm on off-peak times, early week, early weekdays, non-Alfresco days? You know, can we do things like, you know, shown on these images? And how successful would they be? How would we, you know, staff it and manage it? These are just some ideas to explore. Could we partner with First Ascent and have an outdoor rock climbing facility up against the Vale Garage? These are not vetted, these are just ideas to think about. We have done a lot of vetting on a permanent improvement concept for Vale and Campbell Street. We've applied for a number of grants to do permeable pavers, widen sidewalks in front of Harmony Park. So when we close the streets, it looks like an extension of the plaza, an extension of the park. We're hoping to have a more detailed discussion with the board later this summer on whether the board is interested in moving forward in this. The costs range from $900,000 to about $2.5 million. There are other developments that will have significant public interest. Arlington Downs, full circle that the board talked about, we expect the neighbors to have some interest in that. Northeast Community Healthcare is proposing 137,000-square-foot neuroscience building on their campus. St. Vida has presented some very conceptual plans for playing fields and grandstands and lights. And then the 116, 120 Eastman development that we know the neighborhood to the north has some questions about. So we've been working with the manager's office to create a development page on each of these on the website. We've created a development flowchart, so the yellow that shows the current stage in the project process, and people can sign up to be notified of when things are happening. We're hoping that will cut down on a lot of the, you know, emails and calls that we receive on a particular project. And as an example, Crescent Place, when that was going through the process, we were just inundated with, you know, emails with questions, replying to individual emails. We're hoping if everybody signs up for this email blast, we can respond en masse to everybody and anyone who's interested can get the same information. We have a number of TIF districts. I've talked about TIF 5 and the redevelopment that we've accomplished there. TIF 4 is one of our top priorities to try to redevelop. The highlighted areas are the properties that the village owns, and we continue to work with Urban Street. The Hickory Kensington area, we are undergoing infrastructure improvements right now. We're extending Campbell Street as shown by the red line area. Four North Hickory is under construction, they're just topping out. We're finalizing a real estate agreement with them pursuant to the redevelopment agreement to acquire the vacant land to the north. They are building that section of Campbell Street, and the village will reimburse them. That's an example of, you know, public-private partnership that was discussed earlier. And then Four North Douglas, the twin building closer to Rec Park, they have submitted plans to go through the plan commission process. On Ran Road, we've got an ongoing project. It's taken a while to get going with getting IDOT approvals or not getting IDOT approvals, as the case may be, and we found a workaround. After getting lots of requests rejected, we negotiated private easements for the gateway signage, and so that was bid and approved by the board. Fabrication is ready, just holding off on if there's a final decision on the logo before we finalize fabrication on those signs. We have an RFP that will be coming to the board for consideration for the next phase to design the pedestrian crosswalks, the metal banners, and landscape medians. South Arlington Heights Road, the board approved the redevelopment plan in TIF district a couple of years ago during COVID. There are five key redevelopment sites that we're working on. This is a priority corridor. And this is a little drone image of the corridor that was done when we were developing the site and going from south to north, from the tollway north. We're working with Bradford Allen on a gateway project site. It's about 16 acres. They're looking at trying to retenant, form a Daily Herald building as a medical office building first, and then the first phase would be redevelopment of the vacant buildings at the southeast corner of Arlington Heights Road and Algonkin Road, and then making other landscape and corridor improvements around there. This is kind of one of the key gateways when anybody gets off the expressway into Arlington Heights. Just north of that is the site of former Yanni's and School District 59 property. We did have some preliminary proposals on that, but nothing imminent or active is on that particular site at this point. And then further north is the Seeger's Office Building, that's pretty much vacant now. The board did approve a senior living facility with Trammell Crowe. We were negotiating a TIF incentive, but staff felt the request was greater than the need, and ultimately, that developer withdrew. Lexington Homes now has that property under contract, and we're working with them. Part of the plan is to hopefully extend pedestrian improvements with enhanced traffic and streetscape. And then last but not least is the TIF 4 area and International Plaza. The village owns a number of properties here. Urban Street has International Plaza under contract. It's extremely complex, and it's expensive to develop. And we are ongoing in almost weekly conversations with Urban Street, trying to negotiate a redevelopment agreement, or at least terms on a redevelopment agreement to bring to the village board. So this is a really important corridor. We're giving a lot of focus on this, as well as the other projects, and hopefully, we can see some exciting projects come forward on that. Super quickly, our zero-interest loan program, we created a very creative way to fund that for zero-interest loans and other economic initiatives. We have $1.3 million in that fund, and we're looking at new initiatives such as targeted corridor improvements. Maybe there's an opportunity for tech startups or tech incubators, increasing the loan amount. We'll be presenting a scenario on that at an upcoming board meeting. Affordable housing initiative, with the Crescent Place development coming online, we'll be monitoring 88 affordable units now in developments that have gone through since that ordinance was adopted. We did place on hold the evaluation of our trust fund due to staffing issues, and later this summer, we'll be re-engaging in that process, is $960,000 currently in that, and developing a strategy and presenting that back to the board for use of those funds. The sustainable initiatives, we have EV chargers installed in the Vale Garage on the first and second level. Those should be going live within the next two weeks. Working with Public Works, they've been increasing the EV fleet, and we did have some funds earmarked towards the permeable paver concept that I spoke about earlier. So in summary, a quick conclusion, some of the key initiatives over the next couple of years, obviously, the racetrack redevelopment that was talked about extensively earlier, continued enhancements to the downtown entertainment district, continuing to implement TIF districts and our corridor plans, the inclusive housing study and implementing the trust fund, implementing the sustainable initiatives, continuing to monitor and embrace new technology and changes, looking at how to use that zero-interest loan fund in an efficient manner, and then finally rolling out any kind of decision that the board may make on a new logo in the short term. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Charles. And I know I and all members of this board have said this before, but it really is amazing how much your department has done and is doing with the very lean department. So I'm very glad to see that you will be getting a new staff member to help you out with some of these projects and moving forward with some new initiatives. And so I did take note of some of these ideas for the downtown area. Thinking as a lawyer, I think kind of that big chess game would be a lot safer than a climbing wall on the side of the garage, and so just some food for thought. But I thank you again for all the great work that your department is doing. My only question was regarding the numbers for the community development, CDBG, public service beneficiaries, which has steadily increased over the last three years to a number of 562 in 2022. I assume that's individuals served?
Yes, that's individuals served, and I think the major increase there was we got extra funds through the COVID relief CDBG program, so we had almost twice as much money as we typically do.
Okay, I wondered if it was directly related or solely related to the CDBG funding, or is there other components that go into these numbers?
I mean, without looking at individual agencies, it's probably a combination of increased funding from the CV, CDBG funds, and there could have been an agency that just was able to provide more services in a particular year.
Okay, well, in any event, I'm glad to see that we're serving many more individuals each year through this program. So again, thanks for your efforts in that regard. So questions from the board? Trustee Tenalia?
Thanks, Mayor. Charles, I've said it a dozen times before, and Mayor just said, I don't know how you do it. I don't know how you get all this done. This is more than any one department should have to do, but you do a great job, and thanks for doing it for all these years. On page six of the handout you gave us, there's a review of current anticipated challenges. It goes on page seven as well. And of all the things that we talk about from your department and all the things that come in, whether it's a giant project like the Bears, or a small project like an office building or whatever, you deal with those every day, day-to-day, and they just come and you handle what you have to do. To me, these anticipated challenges are some of your most important work. What you wrote down here, and these, how many items are there here? There's five on this page. Those are really insightful and important, and I'm thanking you formally for even bringing them up here because thinking ahead, kind of like what we just got through talking about for the Bears' site. If you don't think ahead and plan ahead, you end up getting stuck somewhere. And these are important things to think about, all of them. They're not specific to, you know, a project, they're just thinking about what's going to happen next, and that's what your department does, and I really appreciate it. So is there anything of these that you want to expand on tonight, just to make us all aware of, hey, this is something that's going to happen that we need to be really paying attention to?
I think item one, you know, is a kind of a passionate item from me, to look at how we can try to continue to build on the success downtown and, you know, with Alfresco and the entertainment district that we created and kind of make it, you know, we try and and the entertainment district that we created and kind of make it, you know, we try and enhance what we've been doing the last few years, but, you know, looking at more of a permanent, you know, approach with, you know, entry features, you know, ballards on the sidewalk, removable ballards that, you know, in the street so it's easier to close the street and looks, you know, more decorative. So that's a, you know, passionate one for me. I think the issues with the office market are really going to be challenging. We have several big office buildings that, you know, are pretty much vacant, one up north. We've got a couple down south. The ones down south, we're looking at redevelopment options. You know, I'm not sure what our opportunities are on the ones up north. So those, I think, are really important and how the Chicago office market impacts, you know, the train schedule and, you know, parking system. We've already seen, you know, a reduction in our revenue from parking fees because we don't have the parkers that we have. So how do we maintain those garages? Because we need them in the evening and the weekends because, you know, downtown's so successful now. So I would say those are a couple of really important ones.
Thanks. I agree with you a hundred percent, and I just really appreciate the fact that you think like this and bring it to all of our attention because these are important points to think about whether we're all here or someone else is here. It's the future and whether it's parking or the metro or something wonderful like our downtown, how do we deal with and how we make it better. So thanks for all your hard work, Charles.
Trustee Labetz.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles, for all that your department does. I've worked with you and your department for many years, even prior to the board, on the plan commission, the downtown master plan task force, and just even interactions that we've had over the years. So thank you for all that you do, and you guys do a lot, as we've seen. I want to also say I appreciate the sign-up ability on the website that lets people get notified when something's happening on a major project that they might be interested in because that's something I hear positive comments about. So I want to pass that along. You mentioned parking and especially parking downtown. One of the things that I struggle with when I see comments on social media about people who will go to Chicago downtown, West Loop, whatever, and walk for blocks to get to a restaurant, and they won't do that in Arlington Heights. They want to be either in the parking garage or within however close they can get. And I would invite those people to come to the corner of Fremont and Vale where there is a village parking lot that is practically empty on a Saturday night where many people walk from that neighborhood down to downtown, and it's a nice peaceful walk. And it's just one of those things that sometimes makes me want to do a head slap, you know. You can walk a few blocks if you're able to, and I know there are people who cannot, and that's fine, but many people can. So I don't know how we get through to some of them, and as well as the lots along the railroad tracks. That's even closer, and there's plenty of parking there on a Saturday night because I see it. I walk past it. So that's, you know, going to be, I guess, an ongoing struggle, and that's related to the development of downtown, you know, doing more things, so.
And it's a good problem to have.
It is.
And, you know, we have to, you know, try to educate and promote those parking areas. We did add new signs on those surface lots, and we've added signs directing people to those other areas. And, yeah, I think it's just something we're going to have to continue to work on.
Yeah. No, I agree. I agree, and I appreciate that you brought that up. And the other thing that I just wanted to ask you about is you mentioned the Daily Herald Building possibly being repurposed for medical office uses. And I was just wondering, it seems like we have a lot of office, do we have a lot, I guess maybe I'll ask in the form of a question, do we have a lot of medical office in relation to the size of our village? It seems like we have, a lot of things are considered for medical uses, and maybe it's because we have a hospital. I don't know, but.
Well, certainly having the hospital, then, you know, is a synergy, and there are more, you know, medical uses around because of that. I haven't done a study to determine whether we have on a per capita more, you know, medical office uses than typical, but I would estimate that we do. That is one sector of the market, office market, that is still reasonably strong, you know, is the medical office market. Your general office is not. It'll remain to be seen how successful they are in leasing that building up. It's a big building. If they can get, you know, one or two key tenants that will drive the rest of the project, then, you know, that's what they'd like to do. If not, then they'll be looking at an alternate plan as redevelopment of that building.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Trustee Bertucci.
Charles, again, thanks for your presentation. A couple of quick thoughts and questions. One to Robin Labetz, Trustee Labetz's point, I think our aging, just in general, the aging population warrants more medical also. But let me take you to downtown Arlington Heights. Couple of things, if we talked about planning that type of thing, but let me focus you on what would be the southwest corner of Arlington Heights Road and Sigwalt. And there happens to be a vacant office building, a couple properties south of Sigwalt, in addition to a vacant lot, a, dare I say, a residential house, so on and so forth, and from Sigwalt to, say, the Dunkin' Donuts. It doesn't show as a very good, you talked about the south corridor. This is kind of the corridor into our downtown Arlington Heights. What is your so-called planning or vision for that corner from Sigwalt, say, to the Dunkin' Donuts? And what can you share with us about that?
There are four different owners of four different properties. So that's, you know, kind of part of the challenge. They're older dated buildings and small sites, so it'd be very hard to redevelop individually. There have been some developers that have started to look at, you know, some kind of assemblage, but not successful at this point. On the west side of Arlington Heights Road, the lots are very shallow, so it is challenging what you could, you know, put on that property. But there could be some small, you know, commercial or, you know, kind of residential type development, even though that corner's not great for residential, some kind of row home or something of that nature perhaps. But right now, the issue is there's four different property owners, and they'd have to kind of be combined.
Okay. But we still, I get that part of it. What can we do anything in the short term? So for example, do you have a relationship or open communication with the empty lot owner?
We do know that empty lot owner, and we did ask them to add some landscaping when they tore the building down. But, you know, we'd asked them to do more, but they did what they did.
Is there any way, or does it make any sense to, you know, lease the property to put some kind of a gateway look there until such time that the area can be developed?
I don't know about leasing, but, you know, is the opportunity for, you know, the village to offer to pay for some landscape improvements, perhaps? I mean, we'd have to look at what that cost was and present something, you know, to the board for consideration, have a conversation with that property owner.
Yeah. So in addition, piggybacking on that, so the entrances off of Northwest Highway, it's a little bit easier to understand that you're entering downtown Arlington Heights, although I think that can be possibly improved on more. The entrance from the, from the west is camp, you know, with four twenty-five, but there's really no, nothing, we kind of go residential, and then all of a sudden you're at that empty lot and, you know, and there's really nothing that kind of makes someone feel like you are now entering the so-called downtown Arlington Heights.
On Campbell Street?
Yeah, yeah. Is there, can we, and even Sigwalt. So can we start, is that in the planning process to start to, you know, have some type of gateway welcoming at some of these, on some of these streets?
So there's kind of a long term and a short, well, both long term, but Arlington four twenty-five, there is a condition in their approval for a gateway sign. We actually have a design concept, and they would provide an easement on that kind of northwest corner of their property. Obviously, they haven't moved forward with their plan. We are working with Public Works and Engineering on redesigning the mid-block crosswalk on Campbell Street. For those of you who went on on the board, a few years ago, the village commissioned a study to create a series of mid-block crosswalks. The consultant did various pedestrian counts, and one of the crosswalks was to be just west of the entrance at Metropolis. And with Arlington four twenty-five, we decided to shift it to Highland and Campbell. So Engineering's currently working on the design. We're going to add input on the design, you know, nicer design elements. So the street would be narrowed a little bit with the bump outs and the brick crosswalk. So that'll be designed, and then we'll be looking at, you know, CIP funding to be able to implement that. So that would start to kind of create a presence and an entrance into the downtown area.
Okay.
We do have a sign on Sigwalt, right across the corner here. There's an easement from Arlington four twenty-five that has downtown Arlington Heights sign. And then I think there's a sign at Northwest Highway and Arlington Heights Road and one at.
Arlington Town Square.
There's one at Arlington Town Square at Sigwalt and Arlington Heights Road. There's one in front of Egg Harbor at Arlington Heights.
Yeah, it's just, I dare I say, just a sign, but I don't know. I mean, I'm thinking of something like when you are in a city and you walk into their Little Italy or you walk into their, you know, something that's a little bit more, you know, you are now entering in what we consider our, you know, downtown area. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, you know, and many know that I live downtown Arlington Heights, so I do a lot of walking in the area, is drop-offs at the edges of Alfresco. There is fair amount of that being done, rightfully so, for whether it's for, you know, as a grandpa, I could say it this way, but dare I say grandpa or grandma and those who are disabled or whatever, and, you know, families, dad, whatever, are more than happy to, you know, pull up, drop off, and then now I'll go park. So, you know, somebody who's in a walker or just have struggle walking doesn't have. So I don't know if there's a way we could make it more convenient for those drop-offs and then to figure out how they get back into the traffic or turn around or whatever. But that's, if you could just kind of start to think that through, because there's a fair amount of that going on at all the entrances into Alfresco.
Yeah, there's definitely, you know, issues that can be looked at and solved on pick-up and drop-off and deliveries and things like that. So we're not the finished product by any means.
I didn't think we were, so I appreciate it. So, okay, that's, thank you.
If I could just.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna, no, I was just gonna say thank you, Trustee Bertucci. I mean, I think this back and forth is exactly what these meetings are designed for, and this is exactly the time that we want to do this as we're beginning to plan, you know, our projects for the next couple of years. So I just want to say thank you. But absolutely, I mean, I think things like that, looking at how can we incorporate, get better gateway features, given Alfresco, how can we facilitate, you know, some of those, you know, Charles mentioned, there's, you know, a lot of positives that came from Alfresco's, but there are, there's some cooked-in inconveniences that occur as well. And when we make improvements, we'd be foolish to not try to solve some of these problems as well. So no, this is, I just want to say thank you. This is exactly the type of thing, feedback and direction we're looking for at this meeting, so.
Thanks, Randy.
Trustee Tringback.
Thank you, Mayor. Charles, very comprehensive presentation. I just have one comment kind of to piggyback on what Trustee Tenalia said. It is amazing what you get done in normal business hours, but the thing that I'm also want to impress is that people in your, on your staff are also the liaisons to six of our boards and commissions, and those are all well after business hours. So you guys are putting in a tremendous amount of time with those boards and commissions like the Planning and Zoning Board, so appreciate that. Is there any update that you can give us at all on, down on Arlington Heights Road with the Amazon grocery store?
On North, yes. So, yes, the Amazon Fresh that they removed the signs on, we've reached out to them. Their official position is they're evaluating their business model, and they may come back with some different approach. We don't know what that is at this point, and that's basically what they've been saying to other communities that are in the same position, that have had stores that are already all built out and ready to open. So it's disappointing. They're still paying the rent, so, you know, it helps that landlord, but it doesn't help the other businesses with, you know, not bringing the foot traffic and things like that.
Yeah, because they're ready to go, correct? If they had the staff?
Completely ready, and, you know, I think they got caught in the hiring challenge. And then after that, they started having the issues with their other business model and started to revisit what they're doing with the Amazon Fresh.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Dannington.
Thank you, Charles. I'm really glad to hear that you're getting staffed up for all this work that you have coming up. I was wondering, in your report, you gave us your business attraction and recruitment for 2022 and listed different types of businesses. Are there types of businesses that you really want to recruit to Arlington Heights? Like, are there segments that we're missing where we really want maybe like more retail or more technology or more hotels that we're really looking to get for our village?
That's a very good question. We've always thought a hotel downtown would be a nice concept. We did do a feasibility study on that, and, you know, it's hard to, you know, get a developer that, you know, will invest in a hotel and find the right sites, and, you know, we haven't given up on that, but that's kind of a long shot. You know, we look at, you know, primarily on kind of the commercial side of things. It's really, you know, the experiential users and uses. So, you know, things like, you know, First Descent, for example, you know, we did a lot to help attract them, and, you know, it's a unique space, but they're bringing a great customer base, a young, younger clientele that go to those rock climbing facilities and, you know, bring them into the community. And so it's a lot of that, identifying retailers that, you know, there's not so many now, but they do pop up from time to time that are looking to expand in the marketplace in Chicago. They might not have a presence here, and we want to make sure that we're ready to attract them when they are ready. And so we continue to network with brokers that represent those kind of tenants. You know, the medical and tech sector, you know, we do have, you know, some strong, you know, tech sector businesses up on the north industrial park that, you know, hopefully we can grow that area a little bit as well.
Okay, thanks. And could you explain to me what CDBG, I know Mayor Hayes, you brought that up, but I'm not sure what that is.
So that's, it's a federal funded program through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant. And Arlington Heights is what's known as an entitlement community. So we get, instead of having to apply, we get an allocation each year, and it's based on a formula of population and poverty level and things like that. And then there are very, very strict rules and guidelines of how we can use that money. We will be having a public hearing in June to talk about our next funding cycle. So we have to have two public hearings. So the first one will be coming up in June, so we'll be explaining a lot more then.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Trustee Baldino.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Charles, for your very detailed report. It's much appreciated. And as others have said, thank you to your entire department. You work lean and you get a lot done and a lot accomplished, and it's really appreciated. I was all queued up to ask questions about the Hickory Kensington TIF, and then you answered most of the questions, specifically about the status of the Four North Douglas. The one question that I had remaining was that, what was it, two years ago now, maybe longer, we had a discussion about the Brew Pub that was. years ago now, maybe longer, we had a discussion about the, the Brew Pub that was supposed to go in there and I haven't heard anything since. Is that still a going concern?
Um, I'll, I'll have to have somebody follow up on that. I mean, I know the board, it's all approved. Uh, they have not moved forward for any kind of permitting. Um, so I have to, you know, try to find out the status on that and we can provide an update to the board.
I, I'm, I'm just curious because we had an awful lot of discussion on it, uh, not only the Brew Pub and the liquor license, but the parking. And so there was a lot of work that went into that. And so I'm just, I'm just wondering if, if anything is moving forward on that. So, uh, I thank you for that. Uh, I look forward to hearing what you find out.
Trustee Grassi.
Thank you. Um, I, I want to thank Mr. Reclus for mentioning the importance of this give and take. Uh, this report is fantastic. I appreciate all you do for our village, just current, but then the long-term goals and ideas and planning. I really thank you for that. But I just wanted to then uh, talk about something I would love to see that kind of goes along with the whole gateway idea and just the different um, uh, entrances to our village is on page nine in the Downtown Entertainment, you have a couple of sample photos and there's the top right, public art. I think public art could be such a beneficial way to connect all parts of our village together and have different kinds of art that can bring people to different parts of the village. I think the mural that we put together, especially with your being a liaison with the Arts Commission and the different commissions we have, I just want to say publicly how important and wonderful I think more public art would be throughout our village, um, to draw people in, uh, to attract people, but then also to connect the village as a whole in, in different wonderful, diverse ways. So that's my love is public art. So I just would like to make that public.
Thank you.
We, we did have that a, a number of years ago, if you recall, and we had different sculptures throughout the community. And, and I don't know if there was vandalism or the rea-, well, the reason was that we're, that went away.
Um, yeah, it was a, an annual rotating art, uh, where we rented uh, art from artists. Um, it primarily was cut in the recession in oh eight, nine, I think. Um, that was part of, uh, you know, the challenges that we faced at that time.
Right. All right. Any other questions for Charles? Seeing none. We'll move on to the fire department. Thanks, Charles.
I just want to thank the board for their support and also again, thank my department staff for all the work that they do. And I'll pass on, you know, any compliments uh, that, that you all made to them. Uh, they, they deserve it. So thank you.
All right, Chief, before you come up, Mr. Reclus.
I just, I just was gonna dovetail on what, you know, I, I, um, I think we all know we're very, very fortunate to have um, someone of Charles's caliber working on our team and all that he's accomplished and continues to accomplish and continues to be as hard-driving as he is. And I wanted to thank you guys for funding the extra position. Um, you know, I think you're getting, you know, freeing up Charles to work on some of these bigger-picture issues that Trustee Tenalia brought up, I think is, you know, a, a, a very good use of, of, you know, our investment in him and his time. And, um, you know, not, again, not that people's fence permits and things like that aren't important to them, but in terms of, you know, what are, you know, what Charles and some of his team members can bring to the table, being able to reallocate to them to some of these bigger things is, is important. And you know, given how hard they work, if you put a, a new position in Charles's department that it, that the person's not going to be sitting idle. There's plenty to do. So I just wanted to make that point.
All right. Thanks, Randy. All right, Chief.
Let me pull up his, his presentation here. And here we go.
Well, while we're waiting uh, for the presentation to be pulled up, I just want to tell you how excited we are to be here tonight to talk to you and, and tell our story. But most importantly, just want to thank Village Manager Reclus, the mayor, and this board for the unwavering support you continually give to the fire department because we couldn't do the great things that we do without that. So thank you. Um, also, before I get started, um, with me tonight is Deputy Chief Hanselman. Um, no doubt, the hardest-working deputy chief in the northwest suburbs. And honestly, I couldn't do it without him. So Kurt, thanks for all you do for, for helping me out. Um, wanted to start by just giving a, a quick overview of, of the uh, department. Um, the command staff is made up of the fire chief, which is myself, deputy chief Hanselman, three division chiefs, one um, in charge of community risk reduction, one in charge of EMS, and one in charge of training. And on, uh, we also have three battalion chiefs that are one per shift for the 24-hour shifts. And also on days, we have Lieutenant Stempian, um, who is one of our lieutenants who's in charge of public education. Today, when I was just going through this, of those nine positions I just mentioned, it, it dawned on me, since this presentation was given two years ago, six uh, of those uh, positions are filled by new personnel, um, which is, is a lot in, in a two-year period. And to see that this department is still um, performing at such a high level, it shows you um, what the succession plan and, and the good people that we have here. The command staff is supported by two part-time administrative assistants and one fiscal clerk as well. The fire department has 108 sworn um, uh, members um, that operate out of four state-of-the-art fire stations. We have two ladder towers, one in reserve. We have five fire engines, um, two in reserve, six ambulances with two in reserve, and three rescue squads and one in reserve, along with miscellaneous other response vehicles that we use um, throughout the year. The fire department provides fire suppression, emergency medical services, uh, specialty rescue, and educational service for the village residents and businesses. In addition to fire suppression and emergency medical uh, responses, the fire department has four specialty teams. We have hazardous materials mitigation, we have water rescue, we have technical rescue, and we have our fire investigation team. And I'm proud to stand here in front of you today and tell you that out of those 108 sworn members, 41 of our members belong to one of those teams. And not one of those members can be on two of those teams. Because our philosophy, and the deputy really works hard at this, is we want to spread the wealth and have more people engaged within the organization. So we don't allow more, uh, more than one person to be on one specialty team. And uh, we have excellent specialty teams uh, that do a great job and do a ton of extra training in those uh, in those four specialty uh, teams that we have. The fire department belongs to the uh, MABUS Mutual Aid Box Alarm System. It's a multi-state uh, cooperative um, that uh, specializes in instant responses and is, is, is efficient coordinated manner. Our department is one of 12 Northwest suburban departments in MABUS Division One. For example, I've just had a, a discussion with Trustee Swingback um, about all the um, uh, train derailments that we've been seeing around the United States with hazardous materials. Um, I'm proud to let you know that the Union Pacific line here in our discussions, we have very little hazardous materials traveling uh, through, through our town. But if we do and we have an incident, we have our own hazardous materials team that's prepared with plans in place, materials in place, um, to handle it. But this MABUS box alarm system uh, that we belong to, uh, known as MABUS, um, um, if we had an incident just in Division One, we could require, or request and get over 100 hazmat technicians to Arlington Heights within an hour. And they train together monthly. They train together, so they operate uh, uh, together. They know what they're going to do. And that's for all of our specialty teams, whether it's dive or, or our fire investigators or, or our, uh, um, uh, water rescue team. They all train and practice together, so they all work um, together. Um, as you can see, um, and you've probably heard me uh, in the village manager talk on, on a regular basis, last year, um, as you can see, we've averaged between 9,000, 500 and 10,500 calls over the last 10 years historically. Last year, we ran the most calls in the history of this fire department. We ran 11,108 calls. Um, it's, it's, the amount of emergency response requests we get is just continually rising. Um, you know, we mentioned earlier, we have several palliative care um, facilities in town that require a lot of assistance from us, the aging of the community, and, and just the stress that people are seeing are, are in their lives now from COVID and, and moving forward. Our ambulance calls have definitely went up. We were almost at 8,900 last year, just in ambulance requests alone. Um, as you can, uh, as you can see, um, on this next slide, Schomburg historically has been the number one, um, the number one um, department in Northwest Central Dispatch Agency for, for calls, always pushing that 10,500 or more. And they've always been number one. And we surpassed them last year, um, with our uh, record number of calls, 11,108. But one of the things that I think is important, just to point out to you, to show you what a great job our men and women do, we ran the most calls with 18 less personnel and one less fire station than Schomburg does. And they've notoriously are the number one call volume um, department in the, in the Northwest suburbs. So our people are very dedicated, are very good at what they do. And they, you know, by the firefighter call ratio at the top, you can see that they, they do an awful lot um, for this community and we're very proud of that. Moving on, I think this is one of the biggest accomplishments we, we had last year, um, getting our ISO Class One rating back. Um, the Arlington Heights Fire Department continues to retain the highest public protection rating, ISO Class One, following a thorough evaluation by the Public Protection Classification Insurance Services Office ISO. ISO ratings are designed to score fire department's ability to protect their community. It's not just the fire department that makes this uh, happen. It's Northwest Central getting those calls in and getting them out, that they look at that. Our Public Works Department plays a huge role in this because they have to supply the water to maintain the water system. They have to test the hydrants and maintain the hydrants. And that all shows how the, the inner workings of the village all come together and, and got us this, this rating. And again, if it wasn't for the village manager and all of you supporting us, the manpower that we have goes into this as well because we can get 14 people on the scene of a structured fire within six minutes, which is important when it comes to responding to fires in town. And it's big for ISO. I think the most impressive thing out of this for me is out of approximately 40,000, 40,000 fire departments nationwide, there are just 400 departments uh, to hold the ISO Class One rating. I think that's amazing with only 29 of those in Illinois. So that is, you know, a big, a, a big win for us. Um, with going on to key accomplishments and recruitment, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Hanselman and then I'll be back up to close. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I just want to continue on uh, with our key accomplishments. And I'm pretty excited about some of these accomplishments that we've been able to uh, accomplish over the years. Uh, being in 2022, we looked at recruitment and we wanted to be able to recruit a more diverse candidate. And we had to look outside what we had been doing, which is we were advertising at our, our school districts and our local community colleges, but we wanted to expand that outreach. So currently, we're advertising at over 90 educational facilities within the area and not even just within Illinois. We're advertising in Indiana, some areas in St. Louis, some areas in Michigan, and some um, fire science degree programs that are across the country. We just advertise, we're trying to get that diverse background coming here to Arlington Heights. Not only are we looking to cast a wider net, but we're also looking to remove some barriers that have been there that prevent people to test for fire departments. One of them being, a lot of the surrounding departments require you to be a paramedic, or they require, require you to have some paramedic experience. And then we also looked at giving some bonus points if you were a basic operations firefighter prior to getting hired. We removed those barriers here in Arlington Heights and we've had a lot of success with them. Um, just this last year, we had uh, 482 applicants pick up an application just to test with us last year. Um, and when we're looking at the difficulties people are having to hire, we were able to kind of combat that. Um, of those 482 that returned an, an application, 368 were eligible to take our exam. And of those that took the exam, we have 192 people that passed the exam and are on our current list. Uh, we just had a great um, success at what we've been doing and hiring and removing those barriers. Um, so we're, we're looking to, to, to expand and to have that diverse candidate here at Arlington Heights. Um, moving on to our next uh, area of accomplishment, um, some FEMA-sponsored training was something that we wanted to look at. We wanted, we partnered with um, Texas A&amp;M, the engineering um, department, just as well as with the police did. Um, it's a, it's a FEMA-sponsored um, organization that are funded by FEMA. Uh, they have experts in the field that come out and they'll provide training here at, at your site if you request them. Um, we offered up our facility to be one of their um, educational sites. Um, they brought some training and, like I said, specialists in the field of hazardous materials response as well as weapons of mass destruction. Uh, we've, we're able to really work within our community. We invited surrounding fire departments to attend with us. We had our police department attend. We had um, our public works attend. We had Northwest Community Dispatch representatives there and members from the hospital. This gave us a, gave us a great community approach uh, to learning about these types of responses. And because of that, I feel if that happened in our community, we're much better prepared to handle a situation like that. Um, moving on to our next accomplishment, which is our high-rise operations. We found that our high-rise operating guideline was outdated. Um, we wanted to make sure that with everything, the development of the village, it's been expanding vertically. We're seeing a lot more high-rises. We wanted to be better prepared to handle a situation like that. This is a very complex type of um, uh, emergency. Um, it's probably our most complex operating guideline of 18 pages long is our current one that we just revised. So we wanted to get it right. Um, we developed a committee. The committee was developed, had, had members of our firefighters, our lieutenants, and our staff members. We also looked to uh, City of Chicago um, to help us out with this. And who better to ask but a surrounding community that does this often. Um, and they were gracious enough to come out and help us. Uh, we were very successful in, in accomplishing that goal. Um, our uh, equipment that we use, the hose, the diameter that we use to uh, attack a fire, in addition to our, just our organizational structure, has made us a much safer environment to handle an emergency if it happened in a high-rise today. Also, another key accomplishment is the area of our, we have, the fire department looked at, we found some communities within, or subsections of our community that didn't take advantage of everything the fire department has to offer. So our Community Risk Reduction Division was looking, how do we, how do we combat that? So they worked with social services and our police department to take a lot of our services to them. So what we did is we took a fire engine, we took our smokehouse, some um, our coloring books where it has a fire safety message, um, out to some of these communities that we just don't see that often. Some of the communities that we were able to, to, to access were Briar Trace Condos, uh, Dryden Place Apartments, uh, the Residence Apartments, Stone Bridge Apartments, and Brandon Berry Condos. This was just such a positive experience for us that this is something we want to continue. We didn't want to um, not talk about the opioid epidemic. National numbers are on the rise. We always see this. And um, we're seeing the same thing here. We're going on more calls for these types of incidents. Um, what we did see was a slight decrease in 2022 of the number of times that the fire department administered Narcan. And it's not because we're not going on the calls. It's not because they're still not an epidemic or not a problem. But what we have now is our police officers are carrying this lifesaving medication. It's also readily available to our community members, um, so they can have it. And when an incident happens, they are right there and they can administer this. And the outcomes for these patients has, has greatly improved. So we do want to i- identify that the numbers have come down slightly, but we're, we're seeing that because we're getting this medication out there early. But we still need to, there's still a challenge out there. We still need to, to try to work with, with this opioid and see what we can do to prevent some of these, these overdoses. Another current and anticipated challenge we have is our vehicle replacement. We have been, we want to make sure that we have the equipment because we can't do our job without the proper equipment. We've always been very supported by Public Works at the village of getting these vehicles for us. What we have seen is with the supply chain shortages and everything else, when it comes time to, to order a new ambulance, which we found out in 2022, we ordered an ambulance that we needed and they told us, okay, if you order it now, you're not going to see it until 2024. And we already needed another vehicle in 2023. So we looked at these challenges and we, instead of ordering one, we ordered two. And I'm sure you all realize that this year, we had to order four ambulances in addition to those two ambulances. And I'm sure you all realize that this year, we had to order four ambulances in addition to those two ambulances so that we would have them in 2025 when they are coming due. So we want to, we're looking at the needs of the department. We're also looking at supply chain issues and the lead time to get these vehicles. And we're anticipating those challenges, and we're trying to get them here and get them ordered in a timely, in a timely manner. Just to update you on what we're looking at right now, if we wanted to, we wanted to order a fire engine or a fire, like one of the tower ladders that you see, it would take us probably forty-one months. So it's very hard to anticipate the needs you're looking at right now opposed to almost four years down the road. So it's something that we continue to work on, and we want to continue to let you aware. So when we come to you and we're saying, yes, we need to order it, and it's not going to be here for a while, just so you understand some of these challenges that we're facing. Succession planning. As the chief kind of told you, we see, just in our staff, six new members in the last two years to help manage the department. But we're also seeing that fifty, in five years from now, fifty percent of our department is eligible for retirement. We could see fifty percent, if everyone left that was eligible, we could see fifty percent of our department leave over the next five years. And of that fifty percent, sixty-seven percent of them are our leaders of our department, our lieutenants, our battalion chiefs, and in positions on staff. So we really need to look to mentor these people to those new positions when we see leadership characteristics, to facilitate that, to offer the education that they need to be ready for those positions. We support the Illinois State Fire Marshal's Office in our programs that we run. So they run a chief, like they run a company fire officer program, an advanced fire officer program, and a chief officer program, all developed to prepare our men and women to take on the next step and to take on that next challenge. And we support them with making time available for them to attend classes and covering the cost of those classes. In addition to succession planning, we do see a mental health concerns that do face the fire department. Being in the fire service exposes you to critically ill patients, injured patients, and the outcomes, they're not always what we would hope for. The outcomes aren't always in a positive way, which can weigh heavily on the men and women of the fire department. When you go back to your firehouses and you wish for something better, you need someone to talk to. The fire department has committed to having four trained personnel that are members of our shift personnel that can be there, that have extra training to help us through these problems. It's hard to talk to a counselor that doesn't really understand what we're doing or how, what our job is. So when having a peer that goes through it and understands it, it's nice to have those people there for us to talk to. And because we are involved in this network, if I want to remain anonymous, I can get someone from a neighboring department that I can talk to. We can facilitate that, those conversations. So we do see the issues with mental health. Our Intergovernmental Risk Management Agency, IRMA, also sees this issue that the village works with, and they have committed to month, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. So what they've done is they've gotten five key speakers to speak the week of May fifteenth. And we've put, set aside time for each one of our members to be able to attend all of those sessions. Those sessions are also recorded, so if they end up getting on calls, they can see that. The department is just committed to mental health, and we're trying to do everything we can to prevent any tragedies coming here. A potential new initiative. I first wanted to start off by saying thank you for your support. You supported our second set of turnout gear, which was started back in 2022. I just want to explain why that's so important. Is with, from firefighters, we get exposed to carcinogens on a routine basis when we're responding on these calls. What we had to do in the past is typically, we would respond to a call. You'd take your gear off, and then you'd get the next call. You'd have to put that gear back on and then get re-exposed to all those chemicals that were into that gear. With the second set of gear, what it allows us to do is to come back from that call. We have a facility in each station that can launder that equipment, and then we can wear our second set of gear. So we're not repeatedly exposing ourselves over and over to that. And we're looking for this program, by the end of, by 2024, every firefighter will have that second set of gear and ready for them. But not only are we looking to prevent those exposures, but we want to look at early detection, too. We know that as firefighters, we're more predisposed, we're more likely to have cancer in the future. So the union, the local thirty-one oh five, partnered with Human Resources, supported by administration. But they have done all the work at trying to find ways of identifying cancers. And they're working with United Diagnostics to try to develop a program of a non-invasive detection where they can find these cancers sooner, and then you can work with your primary care doctor to do further testing. So this is something that we want to get into place and to, it's been, and talks with Human Resources and the local union. And it's a great opportunity for us to get that second approach to identify these cancers and before they become more of a problem. Some of our, also our new initiatives, I was talking to you a little bit about our high-rise policy, which is our very complex policy. But we've also noticed a lot of our other policies have been aging, and we want to prevent that from occurring. So as a new initiative, we want to develop a plan, develop a procedure that reviews these policies and make sure that they don't become outdated. So we're looking at them ahead of time before they're outdated. So we want to review that process and put something into place to prevent that in the future. Also, our community risk reduction, where we saw a lot of involvement in our underserved areas, we also see the need for a fall prevention program. Our community risk has worked with, you know, social services and our senior centers on doing some fall prevention in like kind of group settings, talking about it. But a lot of times, who, when, when an elderly person falls, we're coming into their home, we're helping them up. And a lot of times, we see hazards in their home, whether it be clutter or whether it be like a throw mat that as a walker, you're going to trip over, not having grab rails, not having ramps accessible to them. We could, what we'd like to do is we'd like to take our community risk team and put in place towards we can go out to individual homes, do an evaluation for these elderly residents to prevent them from falling in the future or prevent a fall entirely by putting some of these safeguards in place. So that's a new initiative we'd like to put into place and to continue to help our residents. With our, another potential new initiative is our equity and inclusion. Not only do we want to be able to recruit a diverse candidate, but we want to explore ways of fostering acceptance and inclusion in the firehouse, in our daily work, in our daily, you know, relationships at here at work. So we don't want to just stop at recruiting the diverse candidate, but we also want to explore opportunities to make their acceptance here a valuable and rewarding experience for them. And with that, I would like to hand it over to Chief Harris to finish with our initiative of a fifth ambulance.
One of the things I just wanted to touch on that the deputy mentioned was our succession plan. I've been in my one-on-ones with the village manager. We've had two months in the last six months where we've had blue shirt firemen receive over ten certifications from the state fire marshal's office in one month. That, we've set that, you know, goal for our succession plan for when the deputy and I are ready to hand over the reins, that we have three to five people ready, waiting for us, you know, for them to take our spots. And it's all the way down to the blue shirts that are going down and getting their education and getting these certifications. And lieutenants are working on their master's program. So I think it's fantastic that we recognize the hard work in our succession plan and how successful it's becoming. This last one, I think you have heard me say it. The call volume is through the roof. The EMS calls are up. And one of the things that we're seeing, that we're trying to alleviate, is our response. I'm trying to figure out the best way to say this, our reliability on our neighbors to meet the service calls that we have on a daily basis. There's not a day that I can remember in the last few months that we don't have one of our neighboring ambulances in town answering ambulance calls with one of our fire engines or squads. We've identified that we need a fifth ambulance. The easiest thing for me to do would be come up here and ask the village manager or ask you, we need more people. That's not, that's not acceptable in today's day and age. We need to figure it out at the fire department, how we can put a fifth ambulance in service with the people we have and to be the most fiscally responsible in doing that. We've come up with a couple of models that we're looking, looking at. The biggest problem we have, and the village manager and I have talked about this at length, is we don't have the ambulances. Until we get these new ambulances that we've been waiting, that we're going to wait thirty months for, we can't put this initiative into service just because we don't have. We have two reserve ambulances, but our ambulances, you know, they break down. We have community events that we have to send ambulances to, so we just can't commit to that at this, at this point. So I think one of the things you'll see in 2024, working with the village manager and the local, is we're going to try and come up with a program to put a fifth ambulance in service during our peak hours, using the manpower that we currently have, not hiring additional people, but using the manpower that we currently have and paying them overtime to do that. One of the concerns is we have to be concerned that these men and women are running calls. You know, I think we're averaging six, six calls after midnight, so they're not getting any sleep. And then we're going to ask them to work an additional eight or nine hours and run ambulance calls all day long again. And I think we've come up with a good plan with our local. If we get the support from the village manager and this board to set up a program where they could go home and they could come back on their second day and work when they're well-rested and they're ready to run those calls. So again, keeping their mental health in mind with this. So this is something that is very important to myself and the deputy and the men and women of the fire department. And we're hoping in 2024 to be able to start this program up with your support and the village manager's support once we have the ambulances to do that. We have, we have the data that we will present to you that will justify this ambulance, and we want to do it without asking for additional people. I'm going to try and make it through this without getting worked up. This is probably one of the most touching things that I've ever been involved with in the fire service. Back in December, we were contacted by Operation North Pole. Operation North Pole is made up of men and women from the fire service, the general public, the hospitals, who want to bring the Christmas celebration in spirit to families that have severely ill or terminally ill children. And it got canceled last year again, and I won't go into the details, but it got canceled. And they, they had selected Adrian here, who's an Arlington Heights resident, to be one of the kids in his family to be honored. And they asked us last minute, I think they called us December seventh, and they wanted us to do something in ten days, if we would deliver the Christmas gifts to Adrian and his family. Chief Pecor and the police department were amazing. They supported us. We put a parade together, and we delivered Santa Claus on the ladder truck. And we had a celebration of Christmas with Adrian and his family in his front yard. The front yard was packed with family and friends from Christian Liberty where he attends. Well, it didn't stop there. Once he got done with his chemo and, well, not done with it, but he was going for five days a week, his mom said he didn't want to go back to school because he was, lost all of his hair. And she said, is there anything you guys could do to help him and get him, you know, excited about going back to school? Chief Pecor and I put our heads back together. We picked him up at home in the fire engine and some squad cars, and we gave him a ride to school. And when we got him to school, the entire school at Christian Liberty met us out front and were cheering. And they all had, they all had baseball caps on and gave Adrian a baseball cap so he didn't have to go into school with his bald head. It was just amazing. And then it came time for his birthday in February, and his mom called me, and she said, chief, I asked him who from his class he wants to have for his birthday party we're going to host at Chuck E. Cheese's and what relatives would you like to come? And he says, Mom, I don't want any of those. He says, I want to have my birthday party with the firefighters. So we hosted this birthday party for Adrian, and the police department, police department came. And the guys are amazing. They bought gifts for him. He unwrapped all those gifts. We had cake for him. And this is, to me, bigger than anything we do when we reach out to the community and engaging in the community and made this little boy's day as he's in the, in the, he has leukemia, and he's in the battle of his, for his life, really, and just special young guy. So we celebrated his seventh birthday at the firehouse and was just an amazing day. So I think that's all we have. I think this is a great slide to end with, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thanks, chief, and deputy chief for a very informative report. And we just want to express our thanks and gratitude to all of the men and women of our fire department for all the great work that they do for keeping us safe. And just the last story that you told is really reflective of what the men and women of our fire department and our police department are all about. They're not just separate departments that do their job. They're part of this, the fabric of our community. And that's why you're so successful, because the people, our residents and our businesses, know, you know, what services you can provide and how professionally you provide it. And they consider you to be friends and not just people who provide services. And so can't thank you enough for all the great work that the men and women of our fire department do. I do have one question, though, and that is on the number of EMS calls, the call volume. And I know one of the solutions would be to hire more person, more personnel or add a fifth ambulance. But the other way to solve that problem is to reduce the number of calls. And so I know you've talked about the risk reduction, community risk reduction program. That's one way to help do that. But have you thought about other ways to try to reduce the volume? Either working with our health department or police or whoever.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the fall, falls is still one of our number one calls. But the village manager and I just had this discussion. We've been talking about mobile integrated health for years, and we just haven't been able to get it off the ground. And it's come back to the forefront. And I think if we can work with Northwest Community Hospital, what better resource than the hospital that's right here in our town? Work with our social workers, and if we could get mobile integrated healthcare somehow. I mean, I've started talking about this seven years ago, and it doesn't seem like we've gained traction. But I still, I see it happening in Dallas, Texas, I believe it's Minneapolis, St. Paul. And it is reducing, reducing the number of calls where you have somebody going out to these residents and, you know, taking their blood pressure and making sure that their medications are set out for the week that prevents those calls because they forget to take it, or just little things that you can do to help the residents. If we could get that kicked off, I think that would be something that would be huge in helping us reduce our number of calls. Because not all, almost nine thousand calls are true emergencies that we get called for, but we still have to respond.
Yeah, that's why I'm thinking, you know, public education efforts, you know, just to educate the public that this is something maybe you don't need to call about, or this is a way you could prevent having to call in a certain situation.
We spend a lot of time with our community risk reduction program, talking to this, at senior, at the senior center. Any outing we can get to where we can educate a public, I think you're going to find us there. You know, I mean, it's a priority for us, and I couldn't agree with you more that that's one way of reducing our calls.
Okay, thanks. Trustee Grassi.
Oh, thank you, thank you, chief, for all you do as first responders. You are everything that we need for our health, safety, and welfare in this community. I just really appreciate all that you do. I wanted to make a few comments. First, I am so grateful that- First, I am so grateful that a priority is there for the mental health care of our fire fighters. It is so important to be able to do the important work you do, to have that self-care and to have those peers who are able to give the support needed, especially with some of the trauma and difficulties that come from the important work you do. So I'm so grateful, that is such a priority, and you have those people in place with the training, so I'm really happy about that. I, I wanted to just comment a little bit, first, I love the story about Adrian, and that just shows what kind of importance and social connection you and, and the police and, and we have with each other in the community and what a difference it makes for the individual. And that speaks to that deep human need we all have for social connection. And I chatted with you about this earlier, about our surgeon general, just in the past week or two, put out a call to action for increased social connection in our communities, saying that loneliness and isolation are some of the biggest factors in increased health issues in our communities. And the surgeon general actually had talked about some beginning six pillars, I believe, if I recall, of things that hopefully we can start putting together in our communities. But I think the story about Adrian spoke to what we're already starting to do, but I think that can also help with some of the fall prevention and the risk assessments. Loneliness and isolation is a huge epidemic. Surgeon general talked about it, showed what kind of effects it has on our health and wellbeing, and if we could even get some kind of a commission that could join, connect some of these ways that we can create more social connections. I mean, in our planning department, a lot of what we do is about creating social connection. I think it's so wonderful to see how all of our departments can have a part of this increase in social connection that hopefully can reduce your calls, that hopefully can bring us together as a community. So many different things we can do, but I see so much of that here, and I just really thank you, so I just wanted a couple of those comments.
Trustee Sinalia.
Thanks mayor. Well, chief, you know, it's really clear you love your job, and deputy chief as well. You guys do such a great job, such a, such a heroic thing of all the different departments in our village here, you guys might be the one that people recognize the most because you're out there and about doing things, and everybody appreciates you, and it's a wonderful thing. So on top of that, having you be a resident here, you're, you're new in your job here to a degree, but having you living in town here like Chief Bakor does for the police department, and Charles does here in planning, that is such a benefit to our community, and I just, I'm so thankful you're here. So number one, that's my first comment. You mentioned, and I think it was, I don't remember what slide it was, but it had to do with Mavis and the train derails and things like that. And while that may not be as big of an issue here with Union Pacific and so on, I would imagine your training is just as important for tractor trailer spills and things that happen on Highway 53 and so on. I mean, is, have you encountered anything like that halfway recently at all?
We haven't, fortunately haven't had anything in, in Arlington Heights of the hazardous materials nature, but these team members through Mavis, as you can see in, in this, in this slide on the right, that's at our training tower up, up north, but that's the Mavis Division One team practicing a trench rescue for a trench collapse. The, the, the guys on the left, that's the Mavis team practicing ice dives and ice rescues this past, this past winter. So all these things that, that we could possibly see, they train on year around. But that's not just for Arlington Heights. This team, they can go anywhere in Illinois, and they've even went to Katrina or other towns in hurricanes, and, and our Swift Water team has went down there when they had, you know, the, the flooding and everything. So we have some really strong people on our teams that are real strong leaders in the Mavis division that are deployable, which means they can go anywhere in the state, anywhere in the United States, and we've went to Florida, Louisiana, I forget some of the other places we've went, but most recently, they went to, a couple of years ago when we had the tornadoes, they, they, they went on the collapse for buildings, the, the technical rescue team for collapse. So they train on this stuff year round, we hope we never need it, but they're ready and prepared. And the thing that's really a benefit to us right here in Wheeling on Hints Road is the Mavis Readiness Center where they have over 100 vehicles. If you haven't ever been there, they have Home Day, I believe it's, it's called. You should really come and just see all the equipment that is right here in Wheeling that we could have here assisting us in our, in our community in less than a half hour to 45 minutes.
That's awesome, that's awesome. And one of the things you said earlier about ISO 1, you mentioned that it was a team, it's not just the fire department, it's Public Works, it's Village Board, it's a number of different entities all working together to help you get there. And I just want to point out, I appreciate the fact that you recognize that, because that, it's a team. We're all a team, and we're all trying to do the right thing for 75,000 people in this town, and I'm glad that you're, you're at the helm of it, so thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Trustee Shirley.
Chief and deputy chief, thanks for the presentation. I just wanted to have you guys expand or explain a little bit, like when we did our tour three or four weeks ago of the fire station, I was really impressed by not only like the, the energy and the interest that your staff had in the ambulance and, and other rescue equipment, I think it was, some of it was the extrication equipment, but the fact that we decide what equipment's on an ambulance, it's not some state requirement or some county requirement, that we actually can pick and choose what we put on ambulances, and that our staff is really engaged in researching new equipment on ambulances. I think one of them was this Lucas device that I think it's coming up on a future agenda, but can you just talk a little bit about that? Because I was really impressed, because it seems like we've got the best, and it's not the same from suburb to suburb. I mean, the equipment that's on a Palatine ambulance, on a Wheeling ambulance is not the same as Arlington Heights, and I think, I think we excel at that, and I just thought that was very impressive. I never knew that, I thought everyone had the same equipment on an ambulance, but if you could just explain a little bit about that, I thought it was really neat.
So, so there is a standard from the Illinois Department of Public Health on the requirements that we have to have, have on there. They give us a list of the things that we have to have on there. But this village board and the village manager have been so supportive. You hit the nail on the head, we have the best of the best equipment, and we have the best people working on those ambulances. We have, correct me deputy, but we have multiple guys that travel the country teaching different parts of EMS, from airway management to cardiac, and, and I have never been involved with an organization that takes EMS as serious as the members of this organization do. Everybody wants to be a fireman, and everybody wants to go and put that fire out. But I can tell you that EMS is a priority that I have never seen, and I've been in two other departments prior to this one, the commitment of the men and women and the dedication, the way they critique themselves, not even the hospital, they come back and they critique themselves after calls, is absolutely amazing. And the one thing that I want to share to you is, some of the equipment that trustee Shirley's talking about, our department volunteers to be the trial department. We, if new equipment comes out, our guys are the first ones at Northwest Community Hospital saying, we want to be the trendsetters, we want to try it, we'll collect all the data, we'll do all the work. And I've seen that happen over and over and over, even before I was in this department, Arlington Heights when I was a paramedic, Arlington Heights would be the ones who were getting the EZIO to, to start, or the video laryngoscopes as the trial. And it's absolutely amazing, it's absolutely amazing, the, the, the commitment that we have to EMS and how serious our members take it. And if you have something go wrong, unfortunately, I hope you're in Arlington Heights because you're going to get the best.
Yep, so if you're close to the border, crawl from Wheeling or Palatine to Arlington Heights, so, but anyway, thank you chief, appreciate that.
And thank you and, and trustee Danington and Bets for coming by. The, the guys loved giving you a tour, and it was the talk of the station for the rest of the night, so thank you for coming by.
Trustee LaBets.
Thank you, and I was going to say how much I appreciated being there and how much I learned being there, so thank you for bringing it up trustee Shirley, and, and I'm really glad that, that we were something to talk about, so, but thank you. I, I do really also want to thank you very much on the focus on mental health awareness and the cancer awareness and prevention that you have. I think most people don't realize the types of things that firefighters are exposed to, whether it's mentally or physically in the course of their career. And so, you know, I, certainly being on this board, I have learned a lot about that, and I am really glad that you take the care of your staff by focusing on this, these issues. And I for one was very supportive from the very beginning of the second turnout gear, and will be, and I'm happy that you're getting it, and, you know, eventually it'll be all phased in, so, so that's a good thing. You also talked a little bit about diversity, and so one area that I want to ask about is women on the force. So I'm curious, I actually asked you that at, at the firehouse, that there's three women on, on staff?
Yeah, we have, we have three women and one is a supervisor lieutenant.
Or do you find as you go out to recruit that there's interest from women in the fire service?
There are, there, there, there is interest from, from women in the fire service, and, and that's why going out to these career fairs, and we've kind of tried to focus, there are some, some groups, women in STEM, that, that they have these groups at, at the high schools, and we're getting into these groups and talking to them and, and letting them understand what, what the fire service is, because a lot of people don't think about fire service as a career until they may hear it or experience it. You have those that are all, always going to be interested, but we're trying to expand and, and get that diversity. So yes, yes, we're finding more and more women, you know, interested in the fire service.
Yeah, that, that's, I'm good to hear, thank you. Do you, do you have them together, or are they, like on the same shift or the same firehouse?
Yes, we're, everyone is, I mean, everyone's treated the same, we all have, are all in the firehouse together, we all eat together, work together, sleep together. Now, we all have individual bunks, and we have some privacy, so we're not, you, you have your privacy, you have separate locker rooms and separate, you know, we just say, like, the restrooms and showers are everything we have separate, but, but we are a community we do work together.
No, yeah, I understand that, but that's kind of not where I'm going with that. It was more, you know, that they could maybe support one another if they are working together on the same shift or something like that, because it is hard to be
Yeah, yeah.
the, the one who's different than anybody else, so that's a, a form of mental health awareness.
And with the hiring of Aaron, we do have, we have four, we have four women now.
Ah, awesome, great.
My number was off, sorry.
Okay, all right, thank you very much for all you do, I appreciate it so much, and, and I am so glad I live here and not elsewhere, so thank you.
Trustee Bertucci.
Thank you chief and deputy chief. My question is in this, the recruiting aspect, and you're, a lot of the recruiting activities you talked about were starting positions. I know in the police department, they've had success in recruiting from other departments, other villages, whatever, Chicago, that type of thing. And I remember at one point in time, somebody told me why firefighters don't go lateral as much as police officers, and I can't remember specifically what it is, that it was very hard for them to give something up, or I don't know if it was pension or, or what it was. Can you, you know, now obviously at the chief level, obviously the chief had, but can you give me some guidance on that?
Well, we, originally there, you could not move your pension from, from one department to another. Now that since has changed.
Oh, okay.
So now you can move laterally, you can change, change from your service from another fire department to your, our current fire departments. But the testing process, we don't have a lateral like move type of, you have to test like everyone else. So you have to do the entry level, you have to, you know, kind of, kind of do all those things, and I think because of that, we don't see as many looking for that lateral transfer, because you're starting at the bottom again, even though your pension's there, you're still, you've taken your seniority and now you're starting over again.
Is that different from the police?
I can't speak on the police, I don't know how they handle their seniority.
It is, it is different, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's why I, I was just curious on that aspect. My second question in regards to the increased calls is, you know, I think we've increased our senior and disability facilities and housing in town, has that played a part in the increased calls?
It, it for sure has. We have one facility alone that we went to almost 1,500 times last year, and then we have several palliative care facilities in town that we frequent quite often, where we're transporting them from a doctor's office to, to, to the hospital and stuff. So we do see a lot of calls from those type of facilities.
Okay, what is the facility, where, the 1,500 calls, what was it?
Luther Village.
Luther Village, okay, okay. And my, my third question and our comment is, living in a high-rise condominium building, I'm happy to hear that you're updating and improving the, the high-rise aspects of, of the fire department, so, thank you both.
Trustee Tringback.
Thank you mayor. Well, thanks for the presentation. I was going to say earlier, it's hard to ask a question after that last little talk on Adrian, so your questions seem trivial after that presentation. And pass on my thanks to your entire department. I've said this for the last four years, that when people call our fire department, it's usually an extremely serious issue or a life and death situation, so I think all of our residents can say we appreciate what you do. My question was going to piggyback a little bit about, on trustee Bertucci. So when we were meeting a couple of weeks ago, we, we were talking about that 11, 12,000 calls. So of, of the roughly 8,900 EMS, you talked a little bit about Luther Village, but between that, the Morings, I think you had mentioned Church Creek, just between those three, what percentage makes up, is that 8,900, do you think?
I would be completely guessing, I mean, we have the data, we have the data. What we do each year at the end and just getting our data is we run through our image trend reporting, which is where we do all of our, the platform we do all of our EMS reports on, we do our top 10 call at, by address for the year. So I mean, if, if it's something that you're interested in, I could email it to you tomorrow, I have it on my desk.
I'm just, you know, are, are those your top three?
For sure.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
And then one thing that I want to just try and understand a little bit, so of that 8,900, you're talking about roughly 24 calls a day, and then maybe another six per day, you say, for fire. Of those 2,200 fire calls, I, I'm assuming that's when we, it could be on any 911 call, but we're releasing fire trucks, firefighting equipment, correct?
Correct.
It, it, it's not necessarily a fire?
Correct, it could be a false, it could be a false alarm, it could be a car fire, it could be an odor investigation, anything. I think last year we, we saw, I think roughly 19 fires, where we actually had structure fires.
For the whole year.
For the whole year. So, you know, that's, that, unfortunately, the way the process works, the fires is all encompassing, but we're not seeing 2,000 fires, you know, it's AFAs and trouble alarms and anything that's related to fire.
Okay, and are you, are, are they ever going out with those ambulance calls then in conjunction with them?
Do we have a fire call at the same time as an EMS call, is that what you're?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out, you know, I, I knew that there weren't that many fires a day, so I'm just trying to figure out when you take that equipment out on the road, what's the typical reason for taking it out there if the fires are so few?
Trustee Tringback, are you asking if firefighters go along with an ambulance call?
Right.
Okay.
And obviously not every time, but...
So we're, we're very fortunate in this, in this village that we have two squads, and we have two people on those squads that, that respond along with the ambulance calls. We have a squad at District Two, and we had a, have a squad at District One, and those squads cover District Two, District One, but then they also reach into District Four. Four and District Three. Um, their, their response area is expanded so that we're keeping the fire engines available in-station for when we do have, have these particular calls. But when the squads are out, then the engine has to, has to respond because we've committed to, um, sending a minimum of four people on each ambulance call and, and sometimes that's not enough. So we're very fortunate to have these squads. I think those two squads last year combined went on roughly 5,300 calls. Just the two of those vehicles responded on 5,300 calls.
All right, thank you.
And the, and the nice thing about that, that is we're keeping those rigs available, but we can replace the squads three times for what, for what we can replace one fire engine. So running, you know, per se, running the wheels off of those two squads, you know, that are 250,000 versus an $800,000 engine, maintenance is better, replacement value is, is much better. So we try and put the wear and tear on the proper vehicles, um, and it also reduces our maintenance costs as well.
Thanks.
Trustee Baldino.
Thank you Mayor. Chief, Deputy Chief, thank you for your report and to the entire department for what you do this, do for this village, not to the village. I would love to come sometime and talk to you about hazmat. You were talking about the hazmat response, uh, through the Mavis system. I used to be one of those folks. Uh, and it's even funnier that you talked about Katrina because I used to supervise people that were working Katrina. So, uh, it, it's been six years since I had my tour of the fire department and had a chance to look at the, at the toys that you have down there. Um, but I would love to come and sit down, um, and see that's, that, those things again. I, I wanted to say that your comments about the fifth ambulance were definitely heard, um, I'm sure by the entire board, but, but I heard them. And, um, we will be waiting anxiously to hear what you come up with and, and where that's going. What I wanted to ask is, having said that, is there anything else that you need?
Well, you can always ask.
Want, want?
Want and need, but in all honesty, we're, if we can get these ambulances, get the ladder truck that we have ordered, the engine that we have ordered, um, we have everything we need to provide for this community. Uh, that was obvious to me when I walked in the door, that this board and the village manager has given us the tools to do the job to the best of our ability. And, uh, that's why every time I get up here in front of you, I thank you for the unwavering support because we have the best of the best when we can get them, if we can get our vehicles. We have the best vehicles and we have the, the, the support from the village manager and you, you, you trustees is, is amazing. So we can always want, but we have what we need to do our job.
Okay, great. Thank you Chief.
Trustee Dennington.
I just want to say congratulations on your ISO Class One ranking because I know that's a huge deal and thanks so much for the great tour that you gave us a couple of weeks ago. Thanks.
All right, seeing nothing else on board, Mr. Reckless.
Um, a couple of quick things. One, Chief Harris hasn't been here a year yet. And, um, you know, it seems like, I catch myself all the time, he, he seems like someone, I think you'll all agree, he seems like he's been here 20 years. He, he's been here less than a year. And, um, you know, he made the point earlier, but I, I just want to say, and Deputy Chief Hanselman, you know, a year ago was a battalion chief acting up as a deputy chief. Uh, a few months before that, uh, when we didn't have a, a chief or a deputy chief, um, I had three people I was talking to about acting up as a deputy chief. And I think Deputy Chief Hanson was the least enthusiastic of the three, but I picked him because he was, he was the best qualified. Um, and, and so the fact that you have the leadership team of that department, um, all kind of trial by fire, being pushed in new roles, accomplishing what they're doing, it says a lot about them. And, and the thing that I love is when you have a group of people that go through that together, they're, they become a very, very tight team and that's absolutely what you see. And I'm sure that you, you, you know, the new folks and, and Trustee Labad saw that when you went there, that it's a very, very powerful bond you see when you go there and they're doing great work. Um, and so I couldn't be more proud of, uh, what these folks are doing and, um, we're very fortunate to have the, again, the caliber of people we have working for us here in this department, so.
Thanks. Anything from the audience? Anything on, um, either the planning department or the fire department? All right, seeing none. Thank you Chief and Deputy Chief. All right now Melissa, and you've already mentioned live chicken, so I, I'm hoping it's something else.
Melissa Kears speaking. Uh, to save energy, turn off the TVs at the Arlington Heights Park District Buildings, the Arlington Heights Memorial Library Buildings and the Village Hall, uh, Buildings. And coax Arlington Heights Park District and Arlington Heights Memorial Library to use the village's novice agenda system for their board meetings. And do not use village resources for the Toys for Tots collection. Thanks.
All right, anybody else in the audience on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
All right, Trustee Tinalia, signed by Trustee Bertucci. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks for joining us this evening.